Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call the meeting to the Joint Milford School Board and Milford Budget Advisory Committee meeting to the voters. And would like to go around and have people introduce themselves around the table as a roll call and so that people can familiarize themselves with who we are. So if we could start.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Tim O'Connell, the principal at the Jocks Memorial School. Chris Saunders, the principal at Heron Pond School.
Bill Demers, I'm the principal at the Milford Mill School.
Judy Zehnow, I'm on the Milford School Board.
Joe Vitelli, Milford School Board.
Rob Hallstair, Budget Committee.
Mary Ann Elise, Budget Committee.
John Yule, Budget Committee.
John Wynn, Budget Committee.
Carrie Marsh, Budget Committee.
Susan Smith, Budget Committee.
Bill Cooper, Director of Buildings and Grounds.
I'm Jerry Siderhar, Director of Technology.
Melissa McConnell, Assistant Director of Student Support Services.
Santina Tibido, Executive Director of Student Support Services.
Jane Radwitz, Chief of Education.
Also part of the director of career and technical education, high school. Jane Ford, Business Administrator.
Good morning. Kristi Misha, Interim Superintendent of Schools. So looking forward to this morning having an opportunity for administration, Milford School Board, and the Milford Budget Advisory Committee to work together in this workshop. Welcome, everybody.
Donna McGee, Interim Assistant Superintendent. Thank you. I would like to call on Mrs. Misha, Interim Superintendent, for her presentation this morning.
All right, so we'll go ahead and get rolling here this morning. I know that our calendar invite this morning said eight to maybe 2:45, I think is what it said. How many, show of hands, how many of you would like to try to make this day perhaps maybe a little bit shorter than that? I see lots of hands. All right, so we'll all work together and try to shorten that time period. I think last year, we may have been about 1:45, so we'll try to beat that for sure today. Well, welcome, everybody, and thank you for being here today. I am hopeful that today may look a little different than it has the last couple of years. Obviously, administration is here today to present to you the proposed budget built by administration. But obviously, this is the very beginning of the process, and it really is an opportunity for the board and the budget committee to work together today and in the days and weeks ahead to finalize the budget that we'll put forward to the voters in March. Look forward to doing that collaboratively. Just by way of example, in terms of the collaborative work, our administration develops a budget over several, several weeks. We start with our budget conversations in the summer during our administrative retreat, and then we work together with our principals, our directors. The principals and directors work with their teams in their departments and in their schools, taking input from staff members, department heads. And at our elementary and our middle school level, that includes people that we call our PLC leaders, Professional Learning Committee, Professional Learning Community leaders. These are the folks at various grade levels that work as leaders and help to determine what the needs are. Obviously, the budget development process is really about taking a really deep dive into what the needs are, as well as what the priorities are, and coming together to put forward a budget that makes sense, but also a budget that is fiscally responsible. It's with great pleasure that we share with you today the FY23 administrators' proposed budget. I would like to begin by thanking our administrative team for their incredible work. The book that you have before you here is hours and hours and hours of work during what is probably one of the busiest times, the start of the new school year. Start of the new school year during a pandemic just makes it just that much more. Very, very proud of my directors, principals, and their teams. Lot of great work and very thankful to each of them. We're proud to share this with you today. Within the budget, you certainly see lots of numbers, tables, figures. But truly, the budget that you see here is really a representation of what we value most, and that speaks to a student's journey over the course of their time in the Milford School District. Throughout the budget process, we really try to take those values, present a budget that is well-aligned with the strategic plan. The strategic plan now was developed with, from what I understand, prior to me, with a lot of input from various stakeholders throughout our community, throughout our schools. In just a minute, I'll highlight some various pieces of our strategic plan. It's important that we remember and really think about the various aspects of our strategic plan because the budget is aligned with it. In addition, as I was just mentioning with regard to the pandemic, the budget at this point is not only aligned with what's been identified through the strategic plan, but it's obviously very, very important that we're responsive to the needs that have been brought to us, the impact of the pandemic. And so you'll start to see some of that that's been woven into the budget this year as well, especially as it relates to teaching and learning and the gaps that we have seen as a result of the pandemic. The district's vision is that the Milford School District will be an inspiring community where deep learning and strong relationships empower all students to become designers of their own story. This is our vision. How do we get there? We get there through what is described in our mission statement. The Milford School District nurtures all learners to be the designers of their own stories by relevant and engaging learning experiences to ensure every graduate is fully prepared to pursue individual higher learning opportunities and in-demand careers, enabling them to become positive role models, responsible citizens, and innovative contributors to a robust, dynamic economy. You'll see through the presentations today our strategies to reach our goals include such things as ensuring our students have those relevant and engaging learning opportunities each and every day in the schools. Also by supporting diverse perspectives that find common ground for the greater good through ongoing engagement, meaningful opportunities for student voice and choice, caring, supportive, and collaborative relationships in across communities, fostering innovation to ensure continuous improvement and excellence in our schools, district, and community. This is our vision. This is our mission in the Milford School District. Our strategic plan highlights three goal areas. Goal one, student success. Goal two, culture. Goal three, policy and communications. And goal four, community engagement. Throughout this budget presentation, you'll see that our administrator group has tried hard to align the asks within the FY23 budget to the ideals of the strategic plan. Strategies. Strategy is really important. Can't have goals without strategies that help us to reach our goals. One particular strategy is to strengthen our core curriculum and instructional practices within the district. Increase time and supports for our students, teachers, and families. I always say that teachers can't do it alone. We need the support of the community, teachers, students working together, parents, and community members. Invest in our staff through powerful, ongoing professional development. I've been very glad to see in my three years here in the Milford School District that we've been able to use not only funds through our operating budget, but also we've spent our Title II dollars very wisely to help build the capacity of our educators. When you talk about building the capacity of our educators, it's that ongoing professional development that strengthens their instructional practices, helps them to grow as professionals. Provide more access and opportunity and encourage innovation at every level. Focus on the fundamentals of the elementary education to build a strong foundation for our middle and high school students. We want to ensure that our students have the prerequisite skills, that they have a strong foundation before moving on to more advanced curricula at the middle and the high school level. That's something in our district we're really trying hard to ensure happens. Expand opportunities for choice and innovation throughout our district. Increase access to technology, arts, music, and foreign languages. These are the strategies that you'll see and hear us talk about today throughout our budget presentation. Of course, the strategic plan has a, there's a goal. There's an outcome, right? The outcome is to ensure that students who graduate from the Milford School District have the skills, aptitudes, and experiences that lead to a portrait of a graduate. This portrait of a graduate was designed during our strategic planning process a few years back. It holds true still today and into the future. Critical thinkers and problem solvers. We know how important that is for our students to be able to engage post-graduation, as well as to be successful during their years here in the Milford School District. Creators and innovators, flexible, adaptable, resilient learners, personality, responsible, personally responsible individuals, globally aware citizens, and effective communicators. There's nobody in this room that would doubt that these are the skills that our students need to be successful each and every day pre-K to 12, but also post-graduation. Budget drivers. Let me remind you of the key factors that go into the development of a budget. Key factor number one are the obligatory costs. These are the wages and benefits that make up the largest percentage of our budget. Key factor number two, enrollment data, current and projected. That information is within this budget book for you today. And certainly, I'll be talking a little bit about that as it relates to the next slide. Key factor number three, revenues, cost savings and expenditures. Key factor four, facilities and maintenance costs. Key factor five, out-of-district costs. And key factor number six, our strategic plan as our North Star. All right, so let's start digging into the FY23 budget. I want to share with you that we've had some immediate budget adjustments based on new data that was received just this week. We had been waiting on the health insurance rates to be able to incorporate them into our budget book presentation for you. Unfortunately, by the time this had been sent to the printer, we still had not had those health insurance rates. Jane budgeted those rates at an increase of 2%. And to our surprise, on November 9th, we received, I think we were together at our facilities committee meeting, opened up the email, and saw 5.4% as the increase for the actual health insurance rates for the upcoming school year. So that is going to result in an addition to the administrative budget by $221,735. Next, on November 10th, we received the NSDEC Enrollment Projection Report. This is the report that we receive annually. We, in the Milford School District, do not put all of our eggs in one basket when looking at enrollment projections. Instead, what we do is we look at our current enrollment or the enrollment as of October 1st. That's what the state calls BOY. That's what we report out in terms of enrollment data. We use our current enrollment rates, and we also take a look at what NSDEC shares with us in terms of their analysis. When we received this report this week, we took a look at both the historical and the anticipated projections that the NSDEC organization put forward to us. And those projections do not indicate that we're going to have greater enrollment than what was predicted by our administration, therefore, by our administration at the elementary level. Therefore, the additional budgeted teacher that you saw within our proposed budget will be removed from the budget. That is not something that we're anticipating a need for any longer. If you take numbers one and number two, the difference is $127,733. And that number now has been added as our, added to our proposed budget. So initially, you saw in the budget book, $44,971,454, a 2.04% increase, or an $898,391 increase over the FY22 operating budget. With the adjustment that I just spoke to you about, the proposed administrators' budget presented to you today is $45,99,187. This is a 2.33% or $1,026,124 increase over the current FY22 operating budget. Next, I'm going to invite Jane to come up and talk a little bit about the budget summary based on the adjustments that I just recently spoke about.
The budget summaries, when we went through and got our updated information, as Kristi said, we went through and adjusted the numbers, at least in this sheet. There's about 12 adjustments somewhere else in other places. But the two areas most affected are in the bottom line, the SAU district line. That's picking up the health benefits, and that's picking up the wage-related benefits and the health and dental benefits of the removed teacher. The other line will be Jocks, and that one has gone down approximately $56,000. That was the master step eight that we use as a placeholder for any new staff. So together, those have been adjusted to come up with the new rate and the unfortunate, the increase of 2.33 versus the 2.04 that we had originally shown. Appropriations voted for cent increase-decrease. So each year, we try to give you an idea, all in, including warrants of what's included year over year. And as you can see, we've had a couple of high years, really high in one case, and then we've had some negatives. This year, we're at 1.88% compared to last year, with the caveat being we still have two negotiations going on, so there are two collective bargaining agreements out there. So those will add to the $45,99, bringing that 1.88 up to a number. Not sure yet. But as you can see, we are still pretty well below the last few years of all the warrant articles told that were approved by the voters. Cost per pupil, we are at $16,469, which is below the state average of $16,824. I think we've been below the state average for about four years, if I remember right. I know we have a graph and a table in the book. But as you can see around the area here locally, we are one of the lowest costs per student. Tax impact analysis, the one worksheet I hate the most because there is just no way, no way to predict taxes with any sort of accuracy. The columns over here to your left are the current year's tax impact. So you can see, if you come down through, the 15.23 is the state property tax and the local education tax that make up the school portion of your property taxes. Property taxes for this year are $20.15. Of that $15.23 is coming from the schools between the state mandated tax and our local efforts. Similarly, as we go to the right-hand column, I have put in the $45,99,187. Have backed out projected revenues, which are quite a bit lower than the current year revenues, and that's because we don't include any fund balance in there because we have no idea what the fund balance is going to be at the end of the year, or if we even have one. Going down with state property tax, $2.2 million comes out of, that actually was just set this week with the state warrant the department revenue has set, which will be collected for the state portion of the property tax for the local, for the education. So it's going to come down to $31,601,535, taking back the state portion of the property tax. Our local property tax effort looks to be $33,871,721, which totaled $16.58, which is up from the 15.23. But again, we do not have any fund balance put against that. We have the two open collective bargaining agreements, so those are currently adding zero to our estimated tax, coming down to, at current, an 8.89% or $16.58 tax rate. And I don't trust those numbers at all because I have yet to hit these with any sort of accuracy because I never know what we're going to have for a fund balance, never know what the state's going to turn up for money or take away for money. So with that caveat, take it for what it is. As we look forward here, we're looking at the tax rate. This is Milford's tax rate year over year. Top graph is basically demonstrating the different portions of our town property tax, which is the local education tax, the state property tax, the county tax, and then the nearest local, where your town portion of the tax. Again, year over year, showing the increase throughout. This year, we are down 17.73% in the local portion, or I'm sorry, the school portion of the property taxes. And overall, with county, town, everything involved, we're 20.58% lower than last year's taxes. That's partially due to the fact that everybody got reassessed, so your assessment goes up, so your related tax typically goes down with that. So it's not just all relative to fund balance and so forth. There's other factors that go into it. I believe the new tax base for the town of Milford just passed over $2 billion, and it was about $1.6 million two years ago. So it's gone up quite a bit when they did the reassessment. As we look down to the bottom, the bottom portion is basically just putting it into dollars. The top part's the cost per thousand. The lower part is the actual dollars involved and the relative rates for them. So it's just basically a different look at it. The very bottom number is, I try to keep an eye on what's our school portion of the taxes versus the entire portion. And for the current year, we were 75.48% of the total taxes, so about three-quarters of the taxes going to the schools. District-wide increases and decreases. Our busing costs are up $78,399. That's due to, we have a three-year extension with our regular buster company, so those have gone up, I want to say, 1.82%, not that high. But we have seen a large increase in our special education busing costs due to the driver shortage. It has really impacted that. We are having a very difficult time getting drivers, period, unless we start driving ourselves to pee out. Thank you, Melissa. So those costs are up, and that's probably, I'm probably being a little conservative. I'm a little worried as to where some of those costs may go next year. District-wide health insurance rates. As Mrs. Misha pointed out earlier, those came up 5.4% just last week. Workings compensation's up $10,711. Property liability insurance up $13,516. These basically were right in the average of the pool because we're part of a pool, and so our increases rate-wise were about the same as everyone's. So there wasn't, you know, one major factor that was causing these to go up. And very likely, when the actual rates come in in the spring, we will probably see it as a lower number. It has been for the last few years, with the exception of one which it was, you know, right at the guaranteed max rate. Decreases. The out-of-district placement expenses are $236,500. Those are expenses for our students that are placed in placements out of district to better suit the students' needs when we're unable to provide the services needed. And so we are seeing a decrease with some of the students aging out this year. End of this year. District-wide dental insurance rates are down 1.5%. The other piece to that is on the employee side and somewhat on the employer's side, we have a premium rebate coming back. I know the dollar amount. I just don't know where they're, you know, who it's allocated to. So that will impact that rate slightly, but I'm still waiting for what the breakdown of that's going to be before I can make any changes to that. But it will be a rate reduction for the employees. Total staffing, what do we do that? Total staffing proposed. We have reductions of one regular paraprofessional at the Jocks Memorial School, and that's relative to the fact that we are going to be putting in the ESER grant for support positions at this point. It's what we planned to support the, all four of our school buildings. So we're looking for in-school support personnel. One part-time ELL Associate District-wide. We are reducing the current paraprofessional we have for ELL because we are looking to, in our budget, you'll see down below, one of the additions, we're looking to put an ELL teacher because we do need to have a teacher in there as opposed to the paraprofessional. We are also seeking an ELL, additional ELL teacher through the ESER III grant.
During our department presentations, we'll be talking more in depth with regard to those additions and reductions.
We are looking for an additional BCBA district-wide. We currently have one. This district definitely could use probably a lot more than one or two or three just because, you know, you don't want to stretch them too thin. So we definitely do need to add the BCBA to our program. We're also looking for an early childhood special ed teacher, which is in the preschool. We've had to turn away some of the placements. And we also, as a district, as we're providing our preschool, we have to have a mix. So we have to have a mix of typicals and our students that have been identified. We have to try to maintain that mix. In order to do so, we will need to have a special ed teacher, preschool teacher at it.
All right, so let's pause here. Thank you, Jane. Jane's an incredible asset to the support of all of us as we're developing the budget each year. Thank her very much for that. So let's see if any folks have any questions or would like to engage in any discussion with regard to the slides that have been shared thus far. Can we answer any questions for you? Do you have any thoughts or questions to answer any that you might have this up right now?
I'm surprised that our out-of-district placement is down so much, especially with all the controversy. So I think that's great. Hopefully, that will continue. And I just had a clarifying question on the ELL. So we're getting rid of the part-time associate para and replacing it with one full-time teacher. And in addition?
Yeah, so our Executive Director and Assistant Director of Student Support Services will be diving into those topics a bit more this morning for you. I think that one of the significant issues that is before us now that has reduced the out-of-district group, out-of-district costs, is our students that are aging out. So I believe it's 21, age 21. So we have students that have been involved with some very costly out-of-district placements that will be moving on. And then for, I think something that we can be really proud of in our district is that we are building our capacity to be able to better meet the needs of students with extensive needs in our district. And so that's not always an easy thing to do, but if you remember, over the last several years, we have been able to hire and draw to the district a licensed mental health counselor, social workers, and other folks, BCAs, that have been able to, in part, help to meet the needs and somewhat extensive needs of some of the students with significant educational disabilities. So something that is, we're very proud of, but certainly things that Santina and Melissa will talk with you further about in their presentations today.
A little bit later on in this, I believe you will see, and I know you have seen in your budgets, I think there were some questions regarding an increase in the cost of paraprofessionals for special ed. As we're pulling those kids in from out-of-district placements, it makes more sense that you're going to see your staffing in-house go up in order to assist those kids with their needs as opposed to setting them to an outside placement.
And much lower costs.
Yes, one balances the other off.
With regard to our English language...
With regard to our English language learners, there has been some new legislation that requires us to look differently at how we provide direct instruction to our students that have limited English. We have, again, I don't want to take this away from our directors, and it seems kind of what I'm doing, but we do have a growing number of students here in our district that are speakers of other languages. Because those rules have changed, we're going to be looking at, yes, reducing the para educator. At this point, our current model is one ELL teacher and one para educator. We'll be reducing the paraprofessional, and we will be proposing three teachers of English language learning here in our district. The one that we currently have, Dennis Jobin, is fabulous, and looking at bringing two others on board, one through the operating budget and one through the ESSER funding that has been provided to our district. So again, the experts will talk more about that, but Holly wanted to be able to respond to your comment.
Thank you.
Yes.
This might not be the right time to talk about this, but it just popped in my mind when you were talking about paraprofessionals. Are you seeing some uptake on the paraprofessionals getting certified? Are you going to be able to move any of them into any of these positions?
In terms of, we've seen, we have seen some of our current paraprofessionals receive the professional development necessary to achieve a para educator II certification, which is different from para educators that are going through a teacher preparation program. We have not seen a significant amount of that, but certainly something that we encourage and certainly would support of our para educators in the district. Para educators is definitely a position, again, my experts will talk to this, is a position of significant staffing shortages. We have, if you go onto our website right now, you'll see that there's a number of para educator positions posted. So trying to attract para educators to our district has been a challenge. And not just our district, the staffing shortages is everywhere.
Statewide nationwide. Okay, so seeing no other questions with regard to the first part of our presentation this morning, going to invite Mr. O'Connell from Jocks Memorial School up to talk about his budget proposals. Thanks, Tim.
Good morning, everyone. Tim O'Connell, principal at the Jocks Memorial School, and thanks for taking the time this morning. We have a couple, as you know, Jocks Memorial School is the smallest school in our district. We serve kindergarten and first grade students. And as Kristi mentioned earlier in the presentation, our focus is to provide that foundation that our young students need to be successful at, upon and on to middle school and high school. Currently, we have just 286 kindergarten and first grade students in our division. We're really happy to share with you, I'm happy to share with you, that a lot of our initiatives that we started when I began here in 2019 have concluded. We've done a lot of work on the area of literacy and adopting new programs. And so all those expenses that are associated with that initiative, including supplies, teacher materials, training, all that is complete, as well as a lot of our work around social-emotional programming, we've done a lot at Jocks for students who have social-emotional behavioral challenges. Some of that training has been completed, some of that work, we're happy to say, is coming close to fruition, so. But there's still more work to be done, and our budget here that I'm going to present to you includes some of those next steps for us at Jocks, which includes some work within our Unified Arts Program. We've expanded our Unified Arts Program. We have full-time art, music, PE, library teachers at our school. And some of the other, just some of the other expenses, including some replacement for our kindergarten desks and chairs and cafeteria tables. But the biggest part of any budget here of any school, of course, is the staffing. And so at Jocks, these are some of our total staffing changes for the upcoming school year. Mrs. Michaud has mentioned some of these already. We're going to reduce one of our instructional aides from six down to five, which gives us currently three kindergarten instructional aides and two first-grade instructional aides that we have assigned right now. And those are the people that support students in the classrooms and support some of our classroom teachers. We currently have an opening for an out-of-class support center coordinator. This position is something that we implemented a few years ago, and right now, we're hoping for next year to fund that position through our ESSER grant. We're looking to expand that to be more of a professional position, someone who has the necessary qualifications and skills to support students who use those centers. So that position, we're looking to expand, become a professional position, and use ESSER funding that's available for us for us next year.
Tim, would you mind, for people who might not understand the out-of-class support centers, would you just give an overview of what that's like for your school?
Sure. Yeah, one of the new pieces that we added to our work at Jocks are these out-of-class support centers, which are small spaces within the building. We have two spaces called a calming center and a planning center. When our students have a social-emotional challenge, and there are more and more of these students becoming dysregulated and needing practice to develop some of their coping strategies to be successful at school, they can access these two centers. Currently, the centers are open for all students. Some students use them more regularly than others. You know, the calming center helps students regain self-control, process some of those tough emotions without having to do that in class, which at times can be disruptive. Our planning center, progression would be, a child might go to the calming center to get regulated, and then go to the planning center to help process and develop a plan to be successful when they go back to class. So the goal is always to get our students back to class where that learning takes place, get them regulated, help them process some of those difficult emotions, and practice some of those coping strategies. We've had a lot of success. This position has been opened this year. We've not been able to find someone to support our students in these centers, so it requires a little bit of a teamwork approach. A lot of staff who are available will help our students in the calming center and the planning center. And I think ideally, we would find someone for this position who has teaching certification, either special ed or counseling degree, that would be able to support our students in those centers. As Kristi mentioned, and Jane has mentioned as well, we are anticipating an increase of four special ed 101 aides to support students at Jocks next year. And these, of course, are based on student IUPs, and these, many of these students will be transitioning from our pre-k program into kindergarten next year, so we're looking for that increase there. I don't know if you know, Jocks is really a busy place during the summer. We host, expanded this past summer, an expanded summer programming, you know, at Jocks for a lot of the students within our district. We host the elementary ESY program at Jocks. We have our Title I program at Jocks as well as our kindergarten blast-off program. This summer, over 130 students spent some of their time this summer at the Jocks school. It's a very busy place, and on top of that, we have a number of summer registrations that take place, 40 to 50 summer registration for kindergarten students, and sometimes first-grade students are coming into our district. Our administrative office is very busy to support the summer program as well as all of those incoming registrations. I'm hoping to increase one of the secretary positions from a school year to a year-round position to support all the work that takes place at Jocks during the summer to handle, the phone calls for the summer program, helping, you know, those families that are first coming in, their first steps. It's very discouraging when you come to school and we're closed because, you know, one of the secretaries might be on vacation, or I might be on, I do take a vacation, and during the summer, we want to make sure that they're welcomed and they feel supported when they first arrive to register their children. And I just want to make mention, we did add this year, to me, to really need a full-time music and art teacher to our staffing at Jocks. This is currently an addition of .3 FTE, or full-time equivalency, on the Jocks staffing. We have some great new staff supporting our children and instructing our children in music and arts this year. I will be at some point hoping to include that increase in our regular budget this year, since we felt that we could support that again through the ESSER grant funding. Kristi did mention, and I just want to say, it is tricky at my building to determine what we get that incoming kindergarten classes is really an unknown. And so we talked yesterday about the NASDAQ data that just came out around student enrollment projections. I do feel safe that we will not need to request an additional classroom teacher, but I just put a little asterisk there because we never really truly do know, you know, what number comes through our door that first, those first days. So right now, we have an appropriate student-to-teacher ratio in kindergarten, which is roughly 15, 16 students per class. In first grade, they're around 18 or 19, and we'll do our best to maintain, you know, appropriate class, student-to-teacher ratios in all those classes, so. Oh, I control it. So as I mentioned, one of the big increases for our school at Jocks is some improvements, enhancements in our Unified Arts Programs. Prior to, this year and the year prior, there really wasn't a lot of funding for these programs, both the staffing of these programs as well as the materials and equipment. So in general, you'll see some increases in those supply lines, and those include some new movable shelves and furniture for the library. Our library kind of serves two purposes right now. It is a library with books, and students spend some time every week checking out books, but it also serves as kind of our computer lab. And so we'd like to be able to make that room a little bit more flexible to meet the needs of both those programs, so adding some movable shelves so we can change that space to meet those particular needs. We'd like to have some in-classroom music program risers so students can practice for performances in the classroom, in the music classroom, before going up on the big stage, the big risers. So it's good to have those in the classrooms so the students can practice performing in a setting like that, and also some acoustic paneling. And I'm really excited about this. Our new PE teacher came in with this request. He did some work in a school district in Vermont. He did a student teaching, and he did a pretty comprehensive snowshoeing program with the elementary school students. So funding for a snowshoeing set for each of our 25 snowshoes for our first-grade students to go out in the wintertime and get some exercise and learn a new skill. And I think I mentioned this piece already. So as I mentioned, we've done a lot of work in the area of social-emotional and behavioral challenged students. We're going to continue that work with some training for our classroom teachers in responsive classroom. It is in our district professional training budget for the upcoming school year, and I already mentioned the out-of-class support center coordinator. Just some work, projects that Mr. Cooper and I have talked about at the Jocks school that we'd like to fund, and some of these may be eligible for ESSER funding. One that is not eligible, we think it would be the chain link fence along the Brenner's Walk, which is the main sidewalk that leads to our campus. It runs along the driveway, which is a very busy, busy place. The fence needs some repair work, and I think that we also would just like to, I'd like to expand it, make it a little wider, fit more students, as well as a little bit of water opening and gate for students to get in and out. And some of the other projects that we talked about include the stairwell that leads down to our field. We'd like to make that handicap accessible. We do have a ramp for one end of the field that leads directly to our playground. We did a lot of work in the playground, thanks to Bill. You know, we were able to make that handicap accessible. We'd like to have a little bit easier access for students using what we call switchback ramp that will go down that hillside. And then some painting and window replacement as well. Does anyone have any questions or comments, thoughts?
I have a question about the ESSER funding. Can you guys explain where that's coming from, when it's likely to go away, why we're getting it?
Absolutely.
Olivia, it's your.
So ESSER funding is known as the COVID relief funds. It's federal funding that has been distributed to the state and then to, from the state out to the schools. Uses the same calculations as the Title I funding that is received by the district. Our allotment first came in through the, what was known as the CARES money, then it was ESSER II and ESSER III. CARES was approximately, remind me, Jane?
$234,000.
$234,000. That was the initial funds that came in last fall. Primarily, those funds went to a lot of the PPE costs associated, again, with the pandemic and having students come back to school safely. ESSER II was, gave us, that was about $900,000, gave us an opportunity to really take a look at some of our air quality issues throughout the district. Bill, could you just real quick name some of the items that were within ESSER II that allowed us to do things such as our ductwork cleaning and others?
Yeah, we did, we did all the, all the buildings in the district, except for Bales. We did all the ductwork cleaning, we cleaned all the, from the units on the roof all the way down to the classrooms. Also funded all our air filters during that one year we changed every month. So, and it's in, it also helped pay for the replacement of, what, two units already? Jane is what we have, and we have another on taps, so.
The ESSER II funds were available for a two-year period, so we'll see ESSER II funding expire at the end of the 2023 school year, okay? The next significant amount that was shared with our district was at $2.3 million, and that goes a period of three years, and so that won't expire until 2024. The real highlight in terms of spending for ESSER III is to address, again, the impact related to COVID, primarily as it relates to learning loss, and also speaks to community and parent engagement, and also to help reduce the burden that educators have felt throughout the pandemic. So those are three main areas, and I'd say those are the three main areas the state needed in order to apply for the ESSER funding, needed to allocate or sort of communicate how these funds would be spent in the district. So those are three main areas. So far, through ESSER III, we've been able to hire some positions to come in to help support the district. We have registered behavior technician in that budget and allocated funding for three years. We have a 612 literacy coordinator. We tried to hire this summer a tech integrator, thinking about just the significant increase of our dependence on technology and the interaction of technology with students and staff in the classroom, as well as students remotely. That tech integrator was hired, was posted with the idea that that person would be able to support our teachers in their use of, effective use of technology within the classrooms. Unfortunately, that has not been a position that we've been able to recruit a high level of interest for. We still have items like PPE within the budget, the grant. Gosh, we have a whole, a whole list of different things that we've been able, I'm sorry? Yep, CTE was, we put about three, I think we allocated about $300,000 for opport- Yep, CTE was, we put about three, I think we allocated about three hundred thousand dollars for opportunities to engage students from the middle school level all the way up through high school in CTE-related activities and opportunities. Lots, yeah, lots of, of technology support. Not only are we looking at interactive, interactive whiteboards or smart boards, if you remember those in the classrooms. Not only are those, we're seeking to put those within the grant, but a lot of applications and software that our teachers found to be beneficial during remote instruction and have since found to be beneficial working with students in the classroom as well. So, in fact, it's interesting that you asked because one of the things that we have on the agenda for our board meeting on Monday night is an overview of the various items that have been approved thus far for Esser II and Esser III, and as well as some additional activities that we're looking to propose, some of those that you'll see in here about today.
Can I ask you a question?
So, my understanding of Esser, as you mentioned, is that it's going to phase out over time?
Yes.
And it seems we are building a lot of stuff in that we're going to want to keep. So, what are we doing proactively to, to try to not suddenly have six million extra dollars in the budget? Because we want to keep all these technologies in extra positions.
Sure, absolutely. That's a really, that's a really good point. And so, what we're, what we're hoping to be able to do over the, this, this upcoming year budget and then the next two budget cycles is to gradually release those items from the grant and move them into the operating budget. So long as the need, the need still presents itself, right? It's, you mean, these funds were really to help us to relieve, to see some relief, right? Of the immediate needs related to the pandemic. So long as those needs continue, yes, we'll be looking to support those positions, as well as some of the, the items that have been put within the brand. We'll be looking to support those through the operating budget, again, so long as that need continues. It's entirely possible that over the next two, three years, we'll see that the need is reduced and we may not need to pull from the brand to incorporate into, into the operating budget, if that makes sense.
Yep.
So, is there an opportunity for the hiring of tutors, private tutors, for the students that have most, have been impacted most? Because I know, we hear from some parents that their children have really fallen behind, and I don't know if that's something the district could provide or does provide.
Yeah, yeah. And so, we've actually had several conversations with families that have that same concern. And each of our schools presented their goals and their action plans earlier this year. And within each of their action plans, they talked about what tier-two and tier-three level intervention might look like to help minimize the instructional gap that some students have really felt during the pandemic, especially those that, you know, were home for eighteen months. That did not have that same level of high engagement in, in interaction and learning with their classroom teachers. And so, yes, there's a real, there is a real learning gap for some students. And so, what we know in education is that some students are, are served within what we call the core. The core is available to all students. It's your general curriculum. For many students, we also know that they are moving on to the next grade level, or they're moving on to the next level course at the secondary level without all of the prerequisites to be successful. For those students, we offer something in a, in a tiered model of a tier-two type intervention. So, over and above the core, there is time built into the day. At the elementary level, we call it wing time, what I need. The block of time for both literacy and mathematics, where students can get instruction in very specific skill areas. How do we know what those skilled areas are? In our district, we do benchmarking three times a year, September and again in January, through the NIWA assessment. In addition to NIWA, obviously, our classroom teachers are collecting data ongoingly to help identify where those students' gaps or where their skill deficits might be. We'll address those skill deficits during those blocks of time. Again, at the elementary level, it's known as wing time. At the, at the middle school level, they call it titan time. Again, just a block of time over and above that core instruction where we can help to meet the individual student needs. At the high school, last year, the high school began this, the idea of a task block. Our staff are working this fall to build the professional development for our educators to implement a task block in the second semester. At the high school level, as you can imagine, with the just the magnitude of, and numbers of students, as well as the diverse course load that our students take, there's a need for something called a scheduler. So, the scheduler is something that our teachers have received some professional development on to help prepare for this task block. Teachers may go into the scheduler and basically assign students based on what their needs are. So, if I'm, if I'm a child's math teacher, I can go into the scheduler and assign Johnny to come work with me on Tuesday and Thursday during the task block period. If, if I'm Johnny's English teacher and, and he is in, Johnny's in need of some additional support, perhaps in helping to develop some writing skills, I can say to Johnny, why don't you come see me on Wednesday, okay? So, the use of the scheduler is going to be very helpful with the high school level. But again, took a little bit of time to help prepare, and we are feeling more prepared now to implement the task block at the secondary level in the fall. I'm sorry, in the spring, second semester.
Can I ask a question? Will students also be able to use the adaptive scheduler to choose where they need to go?
Yes. I think that's a second level. I think the first level, right, is teacher assignment. And then the, the next level would be for students to be able to say, you know, maybe it's interest-based, right? During my task block, I'd like to go spend some time in the pottery room. Again, interest, student choice, student voice, to be able to really zero in on some of the, you know, the interests that students have.
I do know from the high school, one of the math teachers offering on certain days after school for those kids who need it, that's provided.
Yes, yeah.
So, they are doing, for those kids that is, from like my son who comes after school, if he needs, if he's falling behind, he, they provide that. Unfortunately, the busing issue there.
Yeah. So, Joe, you, you make another really good point, and something that we have helped, that we built into our Esser grants is to allow for students to do before-school and after-school programs, so to help to support what those needs are. And again, we're not at a place yet because of staffing issues, especially as it relates to the busing. But we did write into the grant to have some busing support for what we call the late bus, right? So, after the main group of students were to leave for the day, other students might receive some additional support from their teachers after-school hours, and that late bus would come around and pick those kiddos up. So, before and after-school supports for students, again, over and above the core, and, and then we're building things into the school day. And then, as Mr. O'Connell just spoke about, last summer, we had a really robust, very, very highly attended summer program. Not only for our ESY or extended school year services for our students with educational disabilities. We had a massive group of our typical developing students also participate in our summer programming. That was highly, highly attended at the elementary level. Our middle school also is in the process of developing summer programming, as well as the high school. The high school also had a great program for credit recovery and for course, course recovery over the summer months that many of our high school-level students participated in. So, some good things going on throughout the district, a couple of challenges in the way, which we guard to some staffing issues and some busing support needs.
So, it sounds like there are some interventional positions that are not filled?
Yes.
How are we accommodating kids that need that intervention?
So, because we do have open positions throughout the district, they think you, you, what we, what we often see a lot of is what Mr. O'Connell spoke about in terms of how he's supporting his out-of-class support centers. It's some patchwork, right? Our Title I programs, both at Jocks and at Haran Pond, are reduced in staff. We're trying to have Title I tutors come to our district to work in those positions. But what you see currently, right, Mr. Saunders is our curriculum administrator, is, is holding Title I instructional groups. So, everybody's chipping in. Lots of teamwork going on throughout the district, as you can imagine. Any other questions specifically for Mr. O'Connell or anything further that we might be able to answer?
This is actually related to the task block thing that you were describing, so.
That's okay.
And we can talk about it, can we get to the high school part?
Yes, yes. Jan's over there. Jan has some voiceless, but she's saying over there that during her presentation, she'll also speak about the task block.
Okay, because I'm trying to understand how that works with a four-block schedule.
Yep, good, good. She'll dive into that a little deeper. And Vasa will help her if her voice is.
I know there's a document that we've shared, so feel free to ask any questions. What's the title of that document? Questions, budget?
Yeah, budget-related questions. There was a Google Doc that was shared with both our school board and our budget advisory committee members. If you have specific questions that you think about after today, go ahead and plug those questions in. We've been responding to questions all week, and we'll continue to do so throughout the budget season.
Christie, can I just ask one follow-up question to the intervention programs?
Sure.
What are we doing to proactively communicate to families or students in need? Because I feel like there's a disconnect between what we're actually offering and what the perception is.
Sure. I think what I probably, because that looks different, right, at each of the levels, I probably will ask the principals to speak to that. So, just before Mr. Saunders comes up to present, Mr. O'Connell, can you speak about that?
Sure. I think, I think a lot of the interventions that we offer for students, either academic or social, emotional interventions are by invitation to those families and talking to them about their students and offering them support in those areas. So, a vast majority of our students in need just don't really need that support or that intervention. And so, that's probably likely why they're not as aware. I know that for Jocks, we put in the support centers, for example. We did have a parent forum. We did talk, you know, a few years ago about what we first will know. But that is on us as far as, you know, the administration communicate what supports are available to families. But most often, these are intervention supports that are just given to families and students that need it, either, you know, by recommendation or based on data, based on a student's IP, or so.
So, I think that's terrific in that you're probably hitting ninety percent of the students that need that. But my concern is the students who their parents or families or the student themselves might feel that they need more, but the district doesn't identify them. So, I just wonder if we have a protocol for, you know, not consistent, but occasional communication. Hey, just to be aware, there's these programs to, to the more general population. Sometimes it's a perception.
Sure. And I would say, you're right. Sometimes parents, you know, or families wanting to have some support for their, for their child. And again, we, these intervention programs aren't limited to some, to some extent with the resources.
Right.
And so, we've got to be careful that we have to sometimes prioritize what, what supports we give to students. While parents and families may want something for their, their son or daughter, and it, I'm going to say it probably would benefit them, perhaps. It's just sometimes we have students that might need it more, and we do have limited resources. I don't, I don't want to sound cruel, but that's basically the.
Now, that makes perfect sense. I just, you know. Thank you.
So, Holly, I know you're talking a lot about a, a lot of academic interventions, but many of our school counselors and school social workers are talking to parents, and they're getting supports that way. We also have two partnerships with Harbor Homes and Greater Nashville Mental Health, so that their school-based services will come here to school. One of the things that we had heard the most for students or families who may need intervention, traveling to Nashua may just, you know, that may not be in the cards, but having the clinician come to the school. And that's been very successful this year.
I would also encourage families to reach out to classroom teachers if they feel that their child is in need of some additional support in whatever area it might be, academic, behavioral, social, emotional, executive functioning. All of those are things that we talk with parents about on a daily basis. If a parent has a concern with a particular area, reaching out to the classroom teacher is the first place to start. While a student may not have been identified to work in a small group or a one-on-one situation with an interventionist, lots of times, our classroom teachers are able to provide families with some ways to support their learner at home or to support their learner through, before or after-school type programming. And so, having those conversations is really important. So, I, I also ask all of you, as you're having conversations with members of our community, to encourage them to reach out to our schools because certainly we want to, we want to help.
And while I say we have limited resources, we also have a wide range of things that we can offer families to meet all kinds of different needs. Learning needs, behavioral needs, social, emotional needs, which is, which is great because we had a lot of those these past few years. More so than any other district I've worked in. So, please keep that in mind. And yeah, it requires a little bit of communication, reaching out.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connell. Mr. O'Connell worked amazingly with his team to develop the budget this year, so thanks very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Saunders is up next to share the Haran Pond budget.
So, Haran Pond overall is in really good shape, as reflected in the budget. We're not, we're not there because we're just in a good spot. We're also at a place where some of the stuff that is kind of our focus things have been focused for the last few years, but unfortunately, the last few years haven't been typical. So, we have yet to even see, this is hopefully the first year that we're going to actually get to see our EL, ELA program that we adopted a couple of years ago. This is the first year that we have a full day of school with all of the students. We have not yet lived a year to say, how far can you get with the curriculum? What will you cover? What will you run out of time on? So, we're hoping this year we can finally get a sense of, half on the third year to see what actually looks. So, not a big add there, but still new for us. We're still finding our way and seeing how this is going to play out. So, we're in good shape overall, and I think it's reflected because there's not a lot for me to share here in a moment. But I will say, going back to last year, at the end of this meeting last year, I was asked by Ms. Talapa and Mr. Hannan if there was something I could add for Haran Pond, like what's my, my wish list, I guess? And the one thing I said was technology. And I just will shout out to Jerry that we are at a place where we moved to a one-to-one program book environment this year, which, I didn't see that coming. I thought that would take us years to get there, so Jerry made that happen, who knows to him. So, that was my big ask, which is why he's not alive here, because that, that really would have been what I think I would have focused on, is technology. And we kind of made it happen without having to have a huge impact here on it. So, thanks a lot, Jerry. That was fantastic for us. So, the three areas we're focusing on for Haran Pond for the budget is continuing to support our reading program, which we are still just in the early stages of. I would like to invest a little bit of money into some furniture, not necessarily furniture that will impact a student in a given space, but our common areas. So, the building being now twenty, twenty-one years old, some of our common areas like the library. We also have some benches and a couple of pod areas for presentations. They're just starting to show wear and tear because they're accessed by tons of students. It's not just a classroom of kids. You know, when we go into our library, we've got couches and reading areas, and those cushions are tearing and ripping. And rather than just tape them and try to Band-Aid the thing, I'd like to get ahead of it a little bit and invest in some of those common areas that are accessed not only by students, but when we have evening activities. Our PTO meetings happen in our library. We have lots of groups that come after school and use our spaces. Boy Scouts have been in for things. And we have girls-in-the-run that access the building. Lots of programs that come in. So, to have spaces that are accessible for groups of students or adults that are in good working order, safe for kids to be on. And the stuff that we have is just original to the building. And while it is the newest building, you know, twenty years of just everyone accessing these spaces is starting to catch up with some of those things. So, trying to get ahead of it rather than wait till something is, we don't have it planned for, and something goes and we have to buy it, and we don't have money for it. Just trying to plan it a little ahead. And then our last thing up there is something that we had last year, it's still a building goal for us, which is increasing communication. If, you know, Holly has kids in this school still, so she knows that we are sending out much more communication than we ever have in the past. We do a weekly update on Mondays, weekly wrap-up on Fridays through our Blackboard system. One area that I would like for us to focus on this year going forward is to increase our use of the website. We haven't had formal training on the new website, and so while I used to maintain our whole. We haven't had formal training on the new website, and so while I used to maintain our old one as the assistant principal, when we changed to the new platform, I haven't received that training yet. But I'd like to make it more of a place parents can go and get more access to what's going on in the building, get more stuff up there. I know we used to put our Helping Hands winners every Friday, the photos went up there so that parents could log on, that kids could show them, you know, that they won the drawing for the weekend. So I think that's an area I'd like to work on for communication. And I leave it in this budget presentation, because there may be other things out there that we don't yet know about. It would be a resource or a tool that I might want to look at to say, "What's a better way for me to reach out to families in a timely fashion that everyone can get?" I know right now when we use Blackboard, it relies on Power School. And so we often will get calls of someone saying, "I'm not getting these messages." And then we have to go into Power School, do the digging and try to find out, "Why is that?" And I hit send to all, I assume it's going to all, right? And so when parents call and say, "I'm not getting your messages," I say, "We have a problem there." So there may be other things that come up, and we'll find out, hopefully with a little research this year. I hope to work maybe a little with Jerry and our IT department to see if there's other things out there. I know having kids in another school district outside Milford, and my spouse teaches in another district, they all use different platforms. And so we receive messages for different things, and we're trying to sort of determine which ones do we think are most helpful and user-friendly for us as parents, for our kids. And so we may find something that we may want to put in. I don't have it necessarily pitched here today for something, but I just want to keep it out there. And then, you know, increasing communication is part of our strategic plan. I think it only makes things better between the building and the community for parents to understand what's going on. I've got a lot of positive feedback just about the weekly update and wrap-up every week so the parents know what's going on with kids. You know, one of our teachers at the high school who has a kiddo at my building came up to me after one of our professional development things and said, "Hey, I appreciate that you're sending those, because you have, you sent the tiger assembly came, and I was able to ask my kiddo about the assembly, and I wouldn't have even known, because, you know, we asked our kids, 'What'd you do today?' And he said, 'Uh, I'm not going out.'" Nothing really happened. So she appreciated that she could have a conversation about what was going on. So I want to continue to do that. So with that said, really, I have two things to really present to you that are kind of the big changes for our budget at Heron Pond. The first of which is to shift the cost of the workbooks for our reading program, which were, for the last two years, were purchased at the district level. We're going to shift that to the building level, because it's a curriculum item that's not going to go away. Purchase these books, every kid hates a workbook. They get actually a few for each grade level. A new student gets a couple for the modules throughout the year that they work through. The first year we adopted the EL program, we didn't invest in the workbooks, and it resulted in us printing a ton of material, photocopying, really building the work for kids. And it proved to be really time-consuming, costly, not the easiest setup when you have just a handful of copiers. And some things had to be in color, because the questions might have been about a picture, that if it wasn't in color, you couldn't have answered the question. So it taxed a lot of resources that we could just avoid with workbooks. The workbooks have been great, the teachers love them, the kids like them, they're a great resource. People are writing with what they're teaching every day. So we're just shifting this cost to the building level. It's almost entirely offset, you'll see in the budget book, because at the building level, we used to each pay for a portion of our NWA testing. So actually, our NWA portion for Heron Pond is about $14,600. What the district is trying to do is take that, because every building paid a piece, rather than everyone has a slice of the pie, one purchase for the district at the district level. So that sort of came out of my building budget, and this was a district expense that's kind of shifting my budget. So it's almost a wash, those two expenses. But this is just a resource that I think we need for our kids, especially with the new program, and still trying to figure out how this is going to play out for us. And then, as I mentioned, my only other big-ticket item is to put some money in here to start to look at those common area furniture pieces that, again, impact not just a class or a small group of kids, but the district, the building, every time we have after-school activities. So I've never done a furniture purchase, again, I'm kind of new with this. So I don't know if this is, this figure is accurate, if it's enough, not enough. I don't even really know. I guess we'll find out. I'm going to work, obviously, with Mr. Cooper on that. He's got experience for supplying furniture throughout the district. Find out where we can get the best prices, the best quality stuff. For areas like our library, I'm going to work with our librarian to see what kind of things... I mean, when you look at these furniture companies, they have these magnificent setups for their library and media centers that are kid-friendly. And so there may be more than just replacement of couches, but, you know, flexible seating. And there's lots of options out there, and I'm going to work with her to say, "Hey, this is your space where you teach every day, kids come every day and access it. How can we make it more accessible and kid-friendly?" So that's my hope. So those are really my two big changes for Heron Pond. Other than that, we have some, our staffing's not really impacted greatly this year. We're anticipating the same number of classrooms for next year. I will say, even just to put on radar, that in another year's time, we may be having a conversation about having to add a classroom teacher, because we have one grade level right now, it's our fourth grade, that's just a bubble group. It's about a classroom less worth of students than the other grades. They've just been significantly lower for whatever reason. And they're working their way through our school, so they were, it was a small second grade two years ago. It was a small third grade last year, this year it's a small fourth grade, small fifth grade next year. And that group will then trickle up into Bill's building in two years. But the incoming groups that have been coming from first grade have been pretty consistent about what we normally see. So we may have to, after that small group works its way through our building, we may have to have a discussion about adding a staff member as a classroom teacher just to keep our class members similar across the board. So I just want to put that up there. With that said, any questions about Heron Pond's changes here?
I'd just like to add a piece with regard to the furniture. I think throughout the morning, you're going to hear about replacement classroom furniture, replacement furniture for common areas, as well as cafeteria tables. So one of the things I'd like to, at the end of our morning, at the end of our presentation, talk with you about is whether or not the furniture items within the budget remain or if we, as a group, are interested in the possibility of removing furniture items and maybe considering year-end funds to purchase furniture or possibly even create a warrant article of some type to take a look at the replacement furniture and those needs collectively throughout the district. Again, you'll hear repeatedly today the need for replacing cafeteria tables that are broken and are a safety hazard. You're going to hear about furniture that, you know, has significant wear and tear, and classroom furniture that is not necessarily any more conducive to learning in classrooms, where we're asking students to work together in small groups and to work more flexibly in their learning environment. So again, keeping that in mind and maybe engaging in some conversation about that a little bit later on this morning, about how we fund furniture throughout our district. Any questions about Chris's first couple of slides? Don't let him fool you, he has preschool in his building. And the preschool conversation is actually coming up next. I'm going to ask Chris and Melissa to stay for the presentation of the preschool slides. Melissa, you want to come up? But with regard to the first initial slides from Heron Pond, are there any questions for Chris specifically?
I had a comment. I just wanted to thank you for the outbound communications, especially... I don't know if all the classroom teachers are doing it, but my son gets a weekly update from his classroom teacher, which is fantastic, because it really gives insight as to what's going on. So I want to thank you for spearheading that. It's wonderful. And I just had a question about furniture. Is there an opportunity at all to use some of the ESAR funding for furniture under the basis that it would be more socially-distanced and/or not?
There's a possibility of that. I think that's something that we might have to put a little bit more research into. You'll see that we have some upcoming requests for ESAR. You'll see that there was definitely some that were built into this budget that we said, in lieu of building them into the operating budget, we may ask for approval and consideration from the state to use ESAR funds. That $2.3 billion, as you can imagine, is being eaten up quickly.
Yes.
And, you know, we'll have to really think about which items stay in operating, which items perhaps we purchase through, if available, year-end funds or potential awards for the upcoming year.
It's really in response to, I'm not sure, was it your comment about we're putting all these long-term positions that have continuing costs? And when the funding evaporates, what happens? So there's an opportunity to carve out a portion of that and invest it in one-time purchases to sort of make the most bang for the buck with the funding and it would be great to see us...
Those are excellent conversations that we're really, truly hoping that we can engage in. If not today, as we continue to work with the board, as we continue to work with the Budget Advisory Committee, because these are decisions that we need to make for our district. You know, again, the ESAR funds were earmarked for COVID relief, right? Not necessarily to support continuous, you know, projects or continuous staffing needs. So we have to really be analyzing what those needs are over the next few years to determine whether the need will still be in existence two, three years from now. And so you're absolutely right, those are going to have to slowly and gradually make their way to the operating budget. And perhaps, you know, some of the one-time expenditures are the better way for us to go with us ESAR funds. So really hoping for this to be more of a group conversation to help inform our next steps.
I'm looking at, has anyone looked at grant writing for some of this equipment? Also, I know for a fact, there's grants for snowshoes. If you look into that for the equipment, we've done it at my, one of the schools I was at, that the PE teacher wrote up a grant, got it sent.
That's excellent, excellent. We do have teachers throughout our district that have done a lot of grant writing around robotics and innovation and various things. So that perhaps is something that we could look into. Thanks for bringing that up. That's something that perhaps your PE teacher, Mr. O'Connell, might want to dig into.
I know who you're talking to.
Great, yes.
So on some of these tables that are broken and safety issue, could they...
Can't hear you.
It's not in nature, sorry. If it's not in the budget right now, can we pull some of the maintenance fund? If there are safety issues?
Jane or Bill want to talk about whether or not the expendable trust for maintenance?
Yeah, I have a blind check for all that, you know. Yeah, so... Yeah, we can. I'd have to see what it is. But so far, we've been spending quite a bit of money out of B&amp;G. And not to get off the subject, because of a lot of vandalism at the schools. We're spending a lot of money repairing stuff that we shouldn't have to, so...
You might have heard of some of these TikTok challenges. Unfortunately, that is something that we have been responding to. Equipment in bathrooms being taken off the wall and having to be replaced.
Can we charge that back to the parents and the students if we find out?
If we find out, but, you know, we just did a urinal for $900. That includes my labor costs.
Mr., I'm sorry, Mrs. Radowitz has been on top of that. I think we're starting to see a decrease in vandalism based on how she and her team are responding to the incidents that have occurred. Absolutely. Vandalism is a criminal offense. We're also working with our Milford Police Department and with families.
So we're also in touch with all the school districts. And we're looking at some of their furniture that they're giving away. So they're either building new schools or renovating, so some of it looks pretty good. We just need to touch it up and...
I think Mike was also asking about the potential of the maintenance expendable trust for such items as the impaired cafeteria tables.
That's not, that's a board decision. That's not my decision.
Yeah.
That is definitely a board, that it would have to be brought to the board.
I gotta see ESAR pay for it under the guise of...
I don't think ESAR, I don't think ESAR can do that. I know that...
Well, I'm thinking for safety, because our seats right now are so spaced. From what I understand, for a while, we were doing every other seat?
But that's in the classrooms, the, some of the furniture that we're looking at, you know, that...
No, Pat, about the cap. Aren't the cap tables doing at lunch still every other seat? Or at one point they worked?
Mr. DeMers is going to be talking more specifically about the cafeteria tables in his presentation. He's got some great visuals to help understand what our asks are for replacement tables. So we'll save that so that you can show some visuals, if you don't mind. And anything else with regard to Mr. Saunders? An effort to move us along, I'm going to see if we can't move forward with our preschool presentation.
You listen.
You can have it, yes.
Okay, so although Mr. Saunders didn't have a lot to say regarding grades two through five, preschool is also located at a Heron Pond Elementary School. Two years ago, they were shifted from Jocks Memorial over to Heron Pond. They currently have two classroom spaces as well as an office space that is shared by the speech and language pathologist and the occupational therapist. So as you were told earlier in the presentation, we are asking for an additional preschool teacher, which would be an early education, early childhood education, special education teacher, sorry. Currently, both of our full-time teachers are dual-certified as early childhood educators as well as early childhood special educators, because they not only function as the classroom teacher for their students, but they also function as the special education case manager for the students that are enrolled on individual education plans. So right now, as I said, we have two classroom spaces. And they were, the preschool program was shifted from JMS because of space constraints. So we have right now, due to taking into consideration COVID, of keeping as much as three-foot distance as we can, 12 students per, approximately 12 students per session, which is a total of 48 students. Right now, the majority of our three-year-olds come in the morning. We do have a couple of four-year-olds that come in the morning. And then our four-year-olds, the majority of the four-year-olds come in the afternoon. When we say that we've been turning away parents that typically developing students, I don't want that to be taken the wrong way. We did have six families that enrolled students over the summer that we did have to say, "I'm sorry, but at this point in time, we are out of room." We did have quite a few other phone calls that came in, just inquiring about space before they actually went through and registered their students on Power School. Where the unpredictability of our student population comes in is our students that come out of early support services. So students can be referred through their primary care physician at a young age to receive early support services through Children's Pyramid or through gateways, which are two local agencies that tend to make referrals to us. And then when the students are at approximately 26 months old, we receive the referral from that agency saying, "We've been seeing this student, and we are now making a school-based referral, and our team needs to complete the process of evaluating and determining eligibility." And upon the age of three, regardless of when that is, whether it's, you know, November 30th or February 3rd, that student starts in our program. So our preschool program is constantly enrolling students all year long. It's not just a beginning of the year to the end of the year. So right now, we have two full-time early childhood special ed teachers. We have two part-time classroom paraprofessionals. By part-time, because we do not have students on Wednesdays. That is the days for our teachers to do their evaluations and meetings. Those classroom paraprofessionals are not in on those days. We also have two part-time one-on-one paraprofessionals that are assigned students with more significant needs. We have a speech and language pathologist, an occupational therapist, access to our district-level part-time physical therapist, and also access to our district-level BCBA. So the increase of adding an additional special education early childhood teacher would be approximately $93,230. Just to give you an idea of what our current program model looks like, right now, our students are enrolled for four days per week, Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays. We have a group that runs from 9:00 to 11:30, and then another group that runs from 12:45 to 3:15. So if our need continues to grow as it has this year, we can accommodate more students. So I just want to go back quickly. Our state has a ratio of students, 12 students to two adults. So given that although we do have two part-time one-on-ones, they are assigned specifically to students, so between our teacher and our classroom paraprofessional, by the time that our holiday break comes in December, our morning will be capped out at 12 students. So in order to accommodate our needs, our three-year-old students who have been enrolled for four days a week, we may have to consider moving to a two-day-per-week schedule. This would allow us to continue to accommodate our growing need, because we do already have some students that are in the evaluation process have not been found eligible but would need to be enrolled should they be found eligible for special education services. So this would allow for four morning sessions of three-year-olds, rather than just two morning sessions. The four-year-old programming would remain the same, because we do not typically enroll quite as many, although we do have... quite as many, although we do have a few out there. So if we were to do that, our schedule change would be capped at our three-year-olds only. So what we would be looking at is having Group One and Group Three come on Mondays and Thursdays, and Group Two and Group Four come on Tuesdays and Fridays. Again, we would still need to leave Wednesdays open for evaluations and special education meetings, only because there's just not enough other time in the day to be able to do this or through, throughout the week. So just some advantages and disadvantages. So advantages of the schedule change for our three-year-olds would be that we could increase the number of typically developing students that we could take in. We could reach out to families that had shown interest that we had to temporarily turn away due to our space constraints. And we would have more capacity for transitioning students from early support services upon their birthday. The challenges is that those students that are on IEPs would receive services only twice a week, so it would not be as frequent and we may see a decrease in their progress due to that. So if we were to bring in an additional teacher and that teacher was able to access classroom space, we would be able to look at truly having what we call early childhood classroom. So an early childhood classroom is a 50/50 ratio. You want at least 50% typically developing learners to the number of students you have in IEPs. Right now, that ratio is tipped, so we have more students with IEPs than we do typically developing learners. The, the purpose for bringing in our typically developing owners is as peer models to be able to not only have them be exposed to a preschool program, but also integrating in for those social opportunities at their youngest ages. And we would also have more placement options for students who might require more programming than just one half-day. We've had an increase of students with more demanding disabilities that they're coming in and a half-day is not necessarily enough for them. And so if we were to be able, able to access an additional classroom space, we could look at possibly having students who may require more than just two and a half hours, access one environment in the morning and then some services in the afternoon. The challenges, the space. So we need more space within Heron Pond. And what would that look like? Would that look like Chris and I having to sit down and shift some classrooms on the first floor route? Would that be us having to explore an alternate location? What we know is through feasibility study, we have said that we would like to have an early childhood building at some point in time. However, that's still a few years away at best. So the space is certainly a challenge for us. And then just our additional resources. Yes, we can get funding through the IDEA, however, we want to be transparent with what those costs would be. So we would need an additional program associate. We would need classroom furniture for that room. We would need an additional bathroom. Right now, we have one bathroom for the two preschool classrooms to access, but it would not be reasonable to ask three classrooms to access one bathroom. And it would have to be developmentally appropriate in size, so we can't have the bathroom size that our second and fifth grade can access. And then the other piece is the playground equipment. Right now, Jock's has done a phenomenal job of developmentally appropriately sized playground equipment, however, Jock's population, I mean, Heron Pond's population of students is bigger. So our three and four-year-olds go out and they can't necessarily easily access that swing or the slide, the bottom of the slide might be just a little too far off the ground for them to safely get off. So our occupational therapists and our physical therapists have started doing some movement groups so that students can still get outside and still move and get their wiggles out, but we would be also looking at the need for a playground space for them that would be developmentally appropriate in size.
Melissa?
Yes.
So one of the things I wanted to address is although we're saying IDEA funds, we've been talking a lot about one-time costs. So within the IDEA funds, they don't call it Essar. I'll give you another acronym. It's American Rescue Plan. So we did get some extra funds. So for these one-time costs, when we think about what furniture might cost us, we have an estimate. Looking at the bathroom, we would have an estimate for that. So really, we're just looking at using our ARP. And I always want to say the retirement system, so I hesitate. So we would be able to cover some of those costs, but I also wanted to just let you know, and I know Chris would probably and Melissa would jump in, but when we think about the feasibility study, there was a whole piece about an early childhood center. So we know that as a community, many people want their child, whether it's with a disability or not, to attend our preschool program. And Melissa had talked about turning people away. Unfortunately, one of the messages that were, we've been faced is that people don't understand their neighbor three doors down got into our preschool, but their child didn't. And we can't say, well, we have to let the neighbor with an IEP in, but your child's is typically developing. And so we have been fighting that most of the summer, that people are now saying, well, you let in so-and-so. So it's really our hope to have met the whole community with this addition of, of another preschool teacher.
So, but there's no place for this teacher to go? Is that what you said?
Well, that is something that we have to work, work on. So if we were to bring in a teacher and provide that classroom space, what would, where would that space be? What would that look like? So that's something that we just wanted to make sure that be highlighted, that.
And even, so there's, you know, some different considerations for space, you know, if it's, you know, reconfiguring what Heron Pond currently looks like, an alternate location, possible portable building. We really have to think about the changing needs over time. And if, if one of those seem, if one of those options seems to make sense for next year, it's entirely possible that it won't be a resolution for the next two years, right? Also considering what Mister Saunders spoke about in terms of those bubble classes and his need for the two-five population. So this is a, I can't overestimate that this is a significant conversation that we need to have as a community. And we're hopeful that not only today, but moving forward, we're going to be able to engage in communications and some planning with you folks. Because we, we do want to be able to meet the needs of the preschool-aged children in our community. And it would be great to be able to have these three and four-year-olds become part of the Milford School District at such a young age and to go throughout their journey. For us to be turning people away means that they're going and, you know, they're receiving their, their supports and services for preschool in other locations. But there may also come a point where our, we're not only turning away regular ed students or typically developing students, but also with this increase of referrals of three and four-year-olds to the Childfind program, that we will be paying tuition to other preschools. And again, as we know, with out-of-district costs, it's much more expensive for our district to put students into other locations and pay that tuition than to be able to serve them ourselves. And so again, can't underestimate how important this conversation is, not only as it relates to next year, but in our time to come.
So I know at some point in the past, and I'm not sure where we left this, but we had talked about having the preschool housed at the high school and then having a program for our students tied into early childhood education pathways. So is that still?
I can talk about that during my presentation.
Because I think that makes more sense.
There's lots of considerations, right? I mean, you also know through the feasibility study that there is, what is it, 75%, 75% of a project, right, at one time, that will have access to those funds. It's the biennial of 24, 25?
26, 27 for the renovation, but we have to pass it at least two years before.
That's right.
So that we can get permits and things like that, so we are ready to go.
And that expansion of the ATC or CTE sector may allow for us to meet preschool needs in that way. But lots of conversation needs to be had because, as you know, these are two, three years in the making. And, and, you know, in some instances, more for planning purposes.
Is there any revenue associated with the typical students that come to the preschool?
Yes, yes. So our typically developing students, we have a $200 on a month tuition.
So one idea I would just throw out to you is somebody's been trying to get a senior center into the building next Keys unsuccessfully. Maybe you guys can put your heads together and get a senior and preschool in the same building, some town money and some school money and, and Joe says no.
So again, lots of considerations, discussions need to be had and partnerships. I agree with you, partnerships between the school district and the town.
You just have to be so careful with outside organizations, access to kids, all of the many, many requirements that go into allowing adults to be near children. All those seniors would have to go through those same components and trainings and that would be a huge.
I think, I think you would have to separate the sections.
That's how you do it in CT, you have a separate entrance that your children come in through that entrance and they never, ever enter the mainstream. And all the students that interact with them are long-term propositions and you go through all the safety and everything.
Yep. Miss Santos?
Could you speak briefly to the impact, both academically and financially, on early intervention? And I know in both cases, this early intervention with preschool is going to have a 12-year impact, basically.
Yeah, absolutely. Let me see if I hit, I, I have a couple more slides, so let me see if I answer any of those questions.
Okay.
And then if not, then we can.
Terrific, thank you.
So just a visual for a schedule of an additional teacher that has a classroom space, we'd be able to have three groups of students, four days a week in the morning. We wouldn't have to worry about whether we needed to move our three-year-olds to a two-day a week session because we would have that additional classroom space. And again, we'd be able to grow our four-year-old group as well. So since our three-year-olds are sometimes in our, in the three-year-old program for two school years, depending on when their birthday is, if they turn three after September 30th, they would then all move to that four-year-old program, which would obviously have a little bit of an increase in numbers. So here we have advantages and challenges. So if we are able to hire an additional teacher, but we cannot get that classroom space. So we want to be realistic that we still need a teacher, however, with our space and depending on where our creativity and partnerships can be, maybe we don't end up with an additional classroom, but how can we still utilize that teacher? So what we can do is have that person be more of an in-class services, working on generalizing skills, so that it's not isolated and it's really, you know, real time in the classroom. That special education teacher would be able to be dedicated to evaluations and meetings so that we can offer more options throughout the week. Right now, very, very limited. It's either Wednesday afternoons or after school. And for some families, that's not feasible. So if we had a teacher, an additional teacher, we might be able to say, oh, well, we could do a mid-morning evaluation that's not on Wednesday, or we could do a mid-morning meeting that's not on, you know, the afternoon at 3:30 PM. And then that would also allow for some professional staff to visit with our Milford Daycares and Early Learning Centers, because we do get quite a few referrals from them. Some of them are due to behavior concerns, some of them are due to speech and language concerns, and we'd be able to go in, see how the students are within that environment, rather than pulling them out to evaluate with people that they are not familiar with and be able to offer some support, suggestions and collaboration with our area childcare centers. The challenges, that person would still need a home base. So we need to figure out whether that was, you know, a desk in one of our existing classrooms, whether it was a different office space. The person would still need a place to hang up their coat and, you know, call home. We would still need additional, or we would need additional related service providers. So the reason for that and the cost associated is that if we were to still be at a rate that we are right now with the number of referrals that we're taking in, we can't pull our one speech and language pathologist and our one occupational therapist from the students that are in session. We would need other professionals to be able to, to be able to work through those as well so that we wouldn't be impacting our current population. And then the other thing is that we might have to send people to off-site preschool locations or childcare centers to be able to provide services. In some cases, parents are not willing to pull their, their child out of the early learning environment that they're in off-site. However, the child might still be eligible for a service that we end up either having to schedule as a drop-in, which is very limited with time available, or we could send our related service providers out to provide that service in the center that they're in. So if we were to have an additional teacher but no classroom space, we would be back to having to look at our three-year-olds only being two days a week. Although we would have the additional teacher provide the supports and services, we would still need the additional space for students to be coming in. Okay, I'm not sure if I answered your question.
I really, I, everything that I've read about early intervention says money spent at this level has a long-term impact in terms of money spent over a 12-year period of time on the same student. And I just wondered if you have, is there some kind of financial statistic that we could?
I, I don't know if there's a financial statistic, but I think that there have been a lot of research done that if students have preschool, general preschool, that they're more successful. I think Jock's teachers would say for kindergartners who have already understood classroom routines, that it's much easier for them than for a student who may be a kindergartner and have no classroom routines and that they're just learning it. I did have a parent who actually in a Jock's meeting who said, she, her son was in our preschool and said, he had a great two years. It made that transition into kindergarten so much easier for him.
I can, I can see firsthand the impact. Two years in any preschool program, especially if it's in the district, has on a student's readiness to be a successful student in kindergarten and first grade, and that just spills over, you know, moving forward. And I think ideally, a solution would be to have the space at the Jock's building or near the Jock's building with the kindergarten and first graders like it was prior to when we ran out of space. Not only for having to transition back to a different building, that, that is not, you know, linear, you know, it's just disruptive. The students, when they were in preschool, knew the layout of the building, knew the staff, and made that transition to kindergarten much more smoother. But right now, the space at Jock's seems to just not exist, so we'd have to really do some major building.
I think with early intervening services, preschool in particular, not only do you see immediate impact in terms of students' transition into the full school day, as Tim was speaking to and Santina, but there's also a lot of research and data out there that says that those early intervening services have a greater likelihood of having, or getting students to on-grade level reading by grade three. And that is, that's pretty significant, and especially here in our community where we're really trying to improve that rate of on-level achievement for our students in the areas of mathematics and in reading by the time they hit grade three. And so yes, the likelihood increases significantly when we're able to not only provide those early intervening services at grades three and four, but early intervention through a multi-tiered system of support, as I was speaking about earlier, that tier one, tier two, tier three. Anything over and above the core for our struggling learners helps them through their journey all the way up through graduation. And so yes, that's where you want to put your, your resources. It's where you want to put your dollars because of the impact it has long-term.
Right. I do know that there's been a great deal of work done with the Head Start program. That's why I was curious if we had, if there was any financial study on dollars spent at this level. But I think just the sheer academics is incredibly important, that we get kids up to grade level. And that's, I think, the purpose of what we're doing.
I just don't see how cutting it to two days is going to give them that enough of experience to, especially at the IEP, but I just don't see it being successful.
Certainly not ideal. A lot of our, I have put feelers out to all of our newer communities and a lot of three-year-old programs within this area are two days a week. However, from what I've seen in my past prior to coming to Milford and from what I'm hearing from our neighboring districts, they are finding that that, that progress is just not as significant as it could be with the increasing program. with the increasing programming. And I think that parents seem to be happier with four days a week and it also makes it more consistent for their child.
They need consistency. They need that consistency.
Yeah, and for our four-year-olds, it gets them more ready for that high-day-a-week kindergarten experience as well.
So if it makes more sense to move it back to JACH's, why aren't we looking, well, to bring temporary buildings or, I mean, there's no room in either school.
We did discuss that as a group. We did discuss the idea of portable classrooms being on-site at JACH's. I mean, it's something that the board wants us to explore more. Mr. Cooper can talk about his hesitancy to do that. We would not put the, my suggestion would not be to preschool out into portable classrooms, but instead relocate maybe some of our Unified Arts programs to, you know, art, music, out to those locations to make other classroom spaces available. The site at JACH's is very limited, even not just in the building itself, but where are you going to put the actual portable classrooms? There's very limited space. We would lose parking, we would lose playground space. It would have a pretty significant impact, you know. And I think the team, we brought this up and discussed this about a month ago, leasing out another space was something that we brought up. Again, our concern as a team, I think, at this point is how much do we put into renovating or building these spaces with the idea that the feasibility study is encouraging us to look at building a new space down the line for the specific purposes of an early childhood center to support those programs. So I don't know, as we have a solution, the space at Heron Pond is also very limited.
The struggle we have with Heron Pond essentially is that preschool has to be on the first floor. Right now, the first floor, I have zero empty rooms as of this year on the first floor. So to add a space means someone is displaced and that may not be ideal for anyone.
Could we just get rid of bales and put them there?
You couldn't do that.
We did explore that piece.
So it says, we're getting way off hitting the stuff, but bales? As soon as we take a hammer to do anything, we're at eight and a half million dollars because we have to do ADA renovations. And you'd have to abate the building and we'd have to bring it up to code.
No, I'm saying, couldn't we just demolish?
No, it's on the historic register.
In working with Chris and Tim and Melissa and Christie, we wanted to bring this to you because the thought is the community is asking for more preschool slots for their peers. We wanted to talk to you about our space concerns. And then as Joe said, you know, do we want two days a week? Will that, right, will that meet our needs? So we wanted to bring this to you and I don't know if afterwards, in your discussions, if you can come up with another option for us. We do have students that are placed out because of their preschool needs and just again, not the staffing and the space and whatnot. Christie did talk about the cost for the tuition. I will tell you that at this point, with transportation and not having enough bus drivers, the transportation cost for us is something that's a huge concern. We are now using different vendors to meet our needs because I can't say to a parent, I'm sorry, we can't drive your child today. So we are being very, very creative, but that's an additional cost for us.
So could we ever explore something like partnering? Because I know we've partnered with Boys and Girls Club on other initiatives. Could we partner with the Boys and Girls Club to utilize their space and have our, like, rent space there? I'm pretty sure they had space available that could be utilized. It's probably not being used during the day.
Well, we did talk about leasing space as one of our solutions or potential solutions. That particular space didn't come up, but it's something that the board would like us to explore. We can certainly do that. You know, we have a great partnership with the Boys and Girls Club. They've helped us out quite a bit during the pandemic, supporting students as we were remote. So I don't know too much about the space there.
They used to have a preschool program. Some of my kids attended the program. I don't know if they did away with it entirely, but I know they definitely have space and they have the theater for extracurriculars and they have a gym. So they definitely would lend well. And their after-school programs are after or before school. So during the daytime, I don't believe that they're fully utilized.
I think that's possibly something we can explore.
Temporary solution until we have.
Till we get our new buildings.
Because I think one factor here, right, is a lot of these costs there. And everybody invests in as far as installing a bathroom, not a cheap expense, playground. These are things that if it's until, just until they go elsewhere, neither of those things.
You pay for it later.
Right, it's a pretty big indicator for something that's a temporary.
And it would be helpful for both organizations, really.
So would this be something that the Facilities Committee could prioritize focusing on solution? Because I know you have a lot of things to talk about, but.
Yeah, I don't think that's in our, it's in our purview or the special advisory facility, whatever the name is. It was, but we're looking at the feasibility study first and we're going building by building. And that's what they were tasked with doing and making recommendations.
But certainly, Susan, you know, those of us that are involved with the preschool, I think the Department of Student Support Services as well as Heron Pond and JACH's Memorial School Administration, we can come together and try to engage in that conversation with our community partners and bring some information back to both committees. So I'm hopeful that Ms. Thanos and Mr. Nguyen will allow us to take a break, maybe at 10 o'clock. Maybe just a short 10-minute break, if that's okay. But before we do, are there any other questions for Mr. Saunders or Mrs. McDonald?
This is, well, this is something we need to come up with a solution or something soon because.
It's here now.
That's what I'm saying, this is not something down the future, down the path. This is now.
So I have a slide for us after the last of our presentations in hopes that maybe we'll have a period of time just before we adjourn today to maybe try to get into some creative options and some ideas together. This needs to be a discussion and it needs to be something that we're having some, you know, generating some ideas about possible next steps. So if it's okay, let's take a 10-minute break. Is that okay with our chair people? Yes, okay. For recess then for about 10 minutes. Thanks, everybody. Help yourself with some snacks. Restrooms are just outside the libraries. Thank you, nice job. Thank you, Mr. Saunders and Mrs. McDonald.
Everyone was concerned about. They have positions, not going away. They never go away. The theory of the fund is that we have, we have a problem because of COVID. So let's create a position to solve that problem. We just raised the budget. It's free money for years, whatever. But we just raised the budget.
Some planes, it's a good solution.
And making it as part of that encourage parents to look at their child's scores and, you know, raise concerns with your child's behavior if they have any. Because I think shares an idea that often, to me, that's what makes it generous. Find that sort of system, so this is what I'm hoping for.
Sure, no, I think you bring up a really good point.
I don't know.
I read, and maybe you can roll the message. That would show up. She said, is this correct? And you was, and nobody's put that on the dimes.
I'm not sure that the, might be shared then as a company.
I'll mention it to bumpus. Like everything else, it's a struggle to get close to.
Officially.
I know, I miss Coach T so much that I jog.
It's so easy compared to.
So now I'm the coach, and I sip all the extra.
For us, I always. But then it's hard, it's thinking.
Yeah, I left bumpus and see if he knows.
I know. And we have a pretty big program.
When I was first, I just, I see a problem in here. And the secretary just doesn't, who else, got the last more out of play? And then how is there another one to play? I wasn't.
Right.
I would, I would have a feeling problem. So amazing. They start that in the elementary.
Yep, in whole town.
And then kids, one kid. Now they can play. That's what I'm mad. That's what I want.
I miss Coach T. A lot of work.
Well, you should look at the website. She actually has tons of athletic facilities. You may find another report.
Oh, I know. The ones I know. See there, I'm limited because I'm not the novice. I want to do the ones that. I do basketball and tennis.
So.
See, those are the ones. Kids might don't want to.
No, cheesy.
Oh, you should go. I joined the women's, we too. Yes, one and twos. Three through six.
Did you win?
Yeah, we won. It wasn't the one and twos that were winning. It was four, five, six, we were the two.
You know, you break bad habits. Get tough, get old, that's how you should. Yeah, that's right.
I work for animal shelter every day. And I can't talk right now. So I just went there and I would live until I tired of it.
Oh, does it dance? You know, semi-retired is half the cash. And now she's a lot of something.
Folks, I'd like to welcome you back. All right, Mr. Demers is up next with his presentation for the middle school budget.
Absolutely.
Yes, somebody's printing.
Find out who that person is.
Not me. Somebody's hard at work here in the building or maybe not in the building. So maybe perhaps was in the queue.
David, can you just turn that on?
Yep.
This is the.
That, that's good timing for your argument.
My perpetual logic.
I'm going to let somebody know that I couldn't print our presentation today because I thought there was a toner shortage. I guess we'll have to figure out why.
Oh, it's our theater program. They are here rehearsing and they're printing.
Um, it's the theater program. Uh, folks are here today rehearsing.
All right, are we okay to go ahead and get started again? Mr. Win, Ms. Anos, are we okay to get rocking and rolling? Awesome. Thank you. I'd like to welcome, uh, Mr. Demers to share the Milford Middle School presentation for the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so I'll try to get through this as quickly as possible, similar to Mr. Saunders' pre preschool presentation. There's not a ton here, um, to chew on. There's really kind of main, three main things. Uh, the curriculum work that we're going to continue to do, uh, some furniture conversations that have already been started, right? And then taking a look at some technology. Uh, so in regards to the curriculum, uh, similar to Mr. Saunders with bringing some of the workbook costs back to the building level that we're continuing now that Harrenfon had started the open up EL program at the elementary level. We're continuing to roll that up into the middle school level. And it's currently in the sixth grade and the SAU has, uh, fronted the cost for that for the sixth grade group. And so next year we'd be looking to absorb that cost for the EL workbooks. And it's, uh, very similar to the process we just went through for our open up math program, which is now fully implemented in all three grade levels. And we're seeing a lot of success there. The teachers are really pleased with, uh, what the students are able to do compared to what we were using previously. So, um, as we go through, we know that the main cost for these programs, the open up programs are the workbooks. Right? But what's nice about open up math is it is an open source program, meaning that all these materials are available for free online. So, uh, now that we're one to one with Chromebooks at the middle school and kids transport them back and forth, uh, to school and home, uh, we want to start taking a look at, um, the workbooks closely and figure out what specifically can we transfer into digital formatting? And what do we need in terms of print? In hopes that over the course of time, we can reduce, uh, the purchase of workbooks because they are a significant cost, knowing that we're going to have three grade levels using two of these open up programs. So that's something before we take that jump, we just want to be really thoughtful about it so that we're just not running into the, uh, you know, printing all the things over and over and eating through toner and paper, which also has costs associated. So we just want to be really thoughtful and have a plan set forth before we make that jump. So furniture replacement, uh, is a big one. We want to start, you know, uh, small and, and have a thoughtful process to the furniture replacement in the classrooms. Um, like Mr. Saunders referenced earlier, um, a lot of this furniture was either purchased or updated at the middle school level when they did the addition back in the early nineties. I think I was 11 years old when that happened. Uh, so some of this furniture is pretty old, um, and could use some updating. And once again, part of that is it's, um, you know, either in disrepair and, uh, and maintenance is constantly trying to fix these things so that they're safe or they're just really not conducive to contemporary educational pedagogy. And so, uh, here's an example of some of the desks that we'd like to purchase. We'd like to do, um, two classroom sets, which is about $14,000. It is actually not in the budget for this cycle. We're going to look to try to either, uh, do year end fund balance if that's appropriate or maybe do some fundraising, um, or, and, and find some alternative ways to fund these. Uh, cause there is a significant cost, um, as you can see, see to just, that's 50 desks, 50 chairs, $14,000, right? And, uh, that barely puts a dent in the, uh, furniture replacement. But you can see this is the style of desk that we'd like to move towards because they can be separated, used individually. You can group them together in various different formats. I've utilized these desks in previous schools and, uh, the kids really enjoy them and offers lots of flexibility in the classroom for various, uh, styles of teaching. Uh, the other big one that's already come up is, uh, to replace the cafeteria tables. Um, this is the current style that we have here. Don't mind the Xs. That's just tape. As, uh, we're trying to skip seats in the cafeteria so that there's additional social distancing. We did add, um, we have a total of six lunch periods. So we have a, a reduced number of students in the cafeteria this year. So our lunch periods start at 10:25 in the morning and go all the way to 1:05 PM. So it's a, it's a long lunch period, uh, throughout the course of the day. But, uh, these tables here, as you can see, they're very tall. Uh, I'd say they're what? Probably about eight feet tall, Bill, when they're, when they're.
Yeah, six, six to. Yeah, somewhere around there.
I'm not a very tall person, so it's hard to judge that. Uh, and so they latch here at the bottom to prevent them from, you know, collapsing down. But sometimes those latches get damaged and those are starting to fail. Right? And so when they're upright like this, we store them in one corner because especially during the winter sports season, we have cheer and wrestling that use that space. So we just get worried that if one of these things gets bumped or something hits it, that's just going to come down and they're big and heavy and that could potentially cause an injury. Uh, and so we're worried about that. And what we'd like to move to is these round cafeteria tables, um, to, you know, one, when we, I think I have another picture here. No, there's pictures in the budget book, uh, of all these, um, for you to reference. But with the, these longer tables that are set up, you have kids, they sit together, very jam packed and it creates a volume problem because they're shouting down the length of the table or they're getting up and they're moving around quite a bit. And it's just really not conducive, right, to have meaningful conversations. And this is a time of the school day that kids really look forward to because it's one of the few unstructured times that they have to be able to socialize. And so with these round tables, the ones we researched have 10 seats around them, so it can still offer a lot of seating for a large group of friends. Um, across the table is about 96 inches, which is a lot further because these tables are probably about three, three and a half feet across. So in terms of like a pandemic lifestyle that we're living, that distance across the table is much greater. Um, and, and it offers a little bit more safety. And also with these modern cafeteria tables, they have a bacteria resistant coating on the top. So it's, uh, much more sanitary and, um, easier for cleaning, uh, which is great too. And we'd also like to, um, bring in about three or four ADA compliant tables. So the tables are a little bit taller and they also, instead of having 10 seats, have eight seats and then a space that a wheelchair can fit. Um, which knowing that there are some students, I think in the younger grades, who that would be important for them when they come up. And also just for kids who have injuries, right? They, they end up on crutches or maybe the principal has knee surgery and is in a wheelchair for a couple of weeks. Um, and being able to roll up to those tables would be, um, nice to be able to do that for kids who have those injuries. But as you can see, cafeteria tables are expensive. It's about $42,000 to get the cafeteria tables in there for the amounts that we need. And so we are going to, um, look through some additional funding as, uh, in terms of, we mentioned earlier, um, to see if maybe asset funding could be a way since there's some distancing, um, components and some bacteria resistant, uh, coating on these tables. We'll see if we can maybe maneuver that a little bit. Um, and then technology is that other big piece, you know? We're always trying to keep things up, um, on the technology standpoint. And, uh, for this budget cycle, a lot of it is just replacing, uh, teacher laptops, right? Uh, over the past couple of years with the pandemic, we've become more and more reliable on software. And a lot of these things that we're bringing in, right, requires the teachers to have, uh, updated, uh, software. So some of the laptops that we're looking to replace are currently obsolete because they're not being updated by the manufacturer anymore. And if they're not being updated by the manufacturer, that makes them much more vulnerable to hacking, right? Which means we do not want these devices accessing our, uh, infrastructure here in the district because that makes us much more vulnerable to nefarious activities. And so, uh, we'd be looking to replace, um, some device or replacement laptops for our English department as well as our art department is looking to purchase, um, some refurbished Apple devices, uh, for the art classroom. Uh, their Apple devices are currently now obsolete and so they're actually not using them, um, right now because they're not safe to be used. And so we'd like to replace those with some refurbished things. And in the art department, uh, the Apple devices are just much more conducive, um, to art software. It's really designed for Macs. And so if you actually see like professional artists and I think even the high school uses, utilizes Macs for their art artistic stuff. Um, and plus because those have already been in place, the current curriculum we have has been designed around that. And so, uh, it'd be really nice to, um, be able to replace it with similar technology. Um, and then finally, we started a new class this year called Innovation Lab. This is a steam based class that Ms. Morrow, uh, who was formerly our technology integration teacher, now is just teaching this class to sixth, seventh and eighth grade students. It's a lot of coding, uh, robotics based things. It's become really, um, successful and popular with the kids. Uh, they really enjoy it and we'd like to, uh, purchase an additional 3D printer to have in that classroom, which will bring our total 3D printers in the school to three. This is something that would benefit the kids during the school day as well as after school. We're working with the high school and developing some after school programming based around robotics and, and steam and having some high school students come down and work with our middle school students. And so just having that increased capacity to do more in that realm would be great for the kids. And we'd like to, um, utilize the same hardware for the 3D printing because we already have the software that goes with it. So we'd save some cost on that. So we wouldn't have to purchase additional software there. And I believe that's all I have. Short tweet to the board. Any questions?
I have a question about the cafeteria tables.
Yes.
Um, I have to assume they're not all broken or in terrible condition, right? But I realize as a true living coach that your cafeteria is incredibly small. But is there a way to configure the table setup such that you could phase your replacement to do some round and some of the older style until you can replace all of them?
Yeah. So we're trying to get creative right now. So Mr. Cooper, um, actually Oyster River School District is building a new middle school and they're offloading some of their older stuff. And so we were able to get eleven, um, round tables that have just eight seats. So that gives us a total of 88. Um, I know they were just delivered to the middle school and, and, uh, Mr. Cooper wants to do some upgrades on them just to make sure that they are, um, working and replacing the seats for the kids to sit on. So we are looking at that. Once again though, I think, you know, these, those tables are also, you know, a couple of decades old, right? They're just, they happen to be round and they're a little bit shorter, um, you know? And I, I haven't had a chance to really look at them yet. Uh, they were just delivered on, uh, Thursday or Friday. So, um, we are going to look at, try to get creative and see if this is something we can phase in over the course of time. You know, because part of it is we want to have it manageable and safe for the custodians who are working with these, um, pieces of equipment, that they're safe for the kids. It's, it's a better environment for their wellbeing in the cafeteria, right? And that it's not going to injure somebody when they're doing cheer or wrestling in that environment as well.
Oh, we love to sell old equipment or no? I mean, I don't know. There would be a market for the tables that are still in good condition to help offset the purchase.
So the district's policy is we'd have to put it out as a bid and get people to bid on the equipment that we're trying to sell. So that'd be a sealed bid, Jane, right?
Yep.
And so we normally do with any of our B and G equipment, uh, trucks that we, uh, sold in the past and.
I don't know if there's even a value.
So most of the tables that, uh, Mr. Demers is talking about, uh, I, they've been here. I mean, we did the renovations, what, back in 92, I think. And, you know, they, those tables, I don't know if they're that old, but they're pretty close. So the locking mechanism is, isn't right at the bottom. It's halfway up and it's welded and they've been breaking. So they've been using bungee cords, which is extremely dangerous.
Yes.
So when the table goes up, it's supposed to lock in the place. So when they move it, it comes out like this. Um, so it's, I think for everybody's.
Safety. Is it mine?
I'm going to just say, uh, put your minds at ease. It's better to, uh, cut them out, cut them apart, throw them in the dumpster and just get rid of them.
All of them or are they?
No, most of them. I mean, you know, if we're still using the long tables here at the high school, you know, we could, we could bring them over here if they're still good and get rid of some of their old ones. The old schools have, um, I know the high school was in 96. And I don't, and if we replaced any, I'd be surprised. I know that, uh, Mr. O'Connell has some tables that were replaced. And, uh, Mr. Saunders had some, uh, replaced, but.
So if the Boys and Girls Club is interested in working with us on the preschool, maybe we could get them a couple to make them more accessible.
Sweep the dude.
Yeah.
My suggestion.
Yeah, here's some broken tables, right?
No, the good ones. We have to get some good ones.
Again, my, my national school lunch program equipment assistance grant has over $30 million for this year to spike grants for this side of stuff.
Yep, exactly. And that's, you know, when we say that we're going to try alternative funding sources, right? Those are the things that we're going to investigate.
That's.
Right? Cause $42,000 is a lot of money, right? And I mean.
That's $30 million.
It, it's important money that needs to be spent, right? Cause it's, it's a safety concern, right? And we know that this equipment, it's, it's expensive because it's built well, right? And it lasts decades, right? And so, um, there's a cost there, but it does last for a long time. And it's, it's an important section in the school, right? That's, it's a high visibility area where kids spend a lot of time in. And, um, you know, we use those tables for staff, uh, activities, right? And they're, they get used by all sorts of people, so.
Community groups utilizing our spaces on weekends, after school hours. Uh, Mr. Patulie, um, say the name of the grant, uh, that you were just referring to again, please.
It was the national, it was, this one was for fiscal year 2021, but it was the National Lunch, National School Lunch Program Equipment Assistance Grant for school, for food.
I'm actually familiar with the program. Can I add? Um, this is literally a national program. We looked into it because of another reason. Um, we are talking gazillions of schools in this country. Um, and if you read a little further down, they do leave you, give you a rubric for prioritization. And, uh, I can tell you that we are never going to get anywhere near the first 10 million schools that we'll apply. Uh, it's poverty and everything. Just so you know, we have applied almost yearly for, for grants with it.
I'm not very.
Thirty million dollars. If it was in New Hampshire, it would be, yeah. But the countrywide drop in the ocean.
No questions? Might you have for Mr. Demers? Anything else?
I had a question on these tables. What's the, does that, do those round tables affect the seating capacity?
Uh, so we would still have the same seating capacity. I did double check that with Mr. Cooper to make sure that because they are a little bit larger, right, and they're round, that we'd still be able to fit all of our students. And I think right now we're, with those longer tables, we have more capacity than we need. And so with these round tables, we'd be right, right in our sweet spot.
And then the others, when they're collapsed up, does that, do they pick up the same amount of space or do they pick up?
Yeah, they're just about the same amount of space.
So just to follow up on your answer, when we are not doing so much, uh, physical separation at some point, uh, and you go to fewer lunch periods, that will still accommodate the number of kids with fewer.
Yes, that's, that's what I figured, uh, in was for non pandemic, non social distancing, right? Go back three lunch periods, one per grade level. Can we fit in 175 kids?
Right.
Right? And, and that's what that, those costs reflect. Anything else?
Thanks very much, Mr. Demers. Next up. Do you have a question?
That this part of that funding, only 48,000 was awarded to the state of New Hampshire.
That's been a.
That's our whole budget.
So that's why I don't like that. I actually didn't get much.
Yeah. Mrs. Radowitz is up next to share the budget for Milford High School.
I apologize for my voice. It's just my sinuses. It's not COVID. Um, our major emphasis over there this year and next year is, um, trying to help students, uh, recover some of their learning loss that they had over the last year as well as, as Bill Cooper talked about, some of the behavior, socialization, uh, skills. So I know you guys have questions about, um, things for putting in the NESTER grant. The person, uh, the classroom support person we have in the NESTER grant, we're anticipating we won't need beyond the two years of the grant. Um, typically behavior is the, the most prevalent freshman gets less of a sophomore. By the time they're juniors and seniors, we don't see very much. This particular, uh, years of freshmen and sophomores, countrywide, statewide, not just here. Um, we're seeing a lot more behavior issues with freshmen and sophomores because they just hadn't been in school. Uh, and then throw TikTok challenge on top of that. And then throw TikTok challenge on top of that. But we are addressing it. We sent bills to four parents this week on the new, you can use the string on your mask and you cut the backs of your chairs. That was the new YouTube challenge. But we found out we didn't for four of those and there we are saying that bill is through those chairs. So this classroom support person we're looking at is really trying to fill the gap to help students get back some of that learning loss and to help with some of the socialization. But after a couple of years, we don't really, we're anticipating that we'll kind of be back to the normal for that. We are also looking to begin some classroom desk and chair replacement in our math department to try to get some flexible seating, making our course offering decisions based on enrollment numbers, but also trying to maintain our AP offerings. Have all freshmen and sophomores complete the NWA assessment to provide data to our teachers so they know where are the gaps, how do we do our supports and interventions. Continuing to review our high school schedule to provide some consistent academic support throughout the school year. And our PLCs and departments are continuing to work on unit development and data. So AP course offerings, we do, are continuing to do eight offerings. We did lose three and gained three based just on enrollment requests from students. So we added AP European History, Studio Art, and the second physics AP one. Did not offer AP Chemistry, Computer Science, or Data Structures, again, based on requests. But by doing so, we increased our numbers by thirty students this year. So there's thirty additional students taking AP courses this year than we did before, up to eight and a half percent of our students. So the task block is the Teacher Academic Support Center. What we're looking to do is to take eight minutes from each of our four classes. That still meets our contractual obligations with our teachers for prep time. It provides us forty minutes because we're also taking, right now, we have five minutes at the start of lunch and five minutes at our end of lunch that are just really extra transition times, so we're taking that time as well. So we have forty minutes every single day between B block and C block that students will be, on Mondays, they're assigned to their task kind of homeroom and they'll get scheduled using our Power School scheduler, the NBA scheduler. Initially, we're going to have teachers looking where the students are going to go. We do hope to have students eventually being able to do some of their own preferences. We're actually going to pilot it the end of December. So on the twentieth of December, we will schedule students for the next two days. We'll have them go on the twenty-first and twenty-second, be able to problem solve things that we have there. If we come back in January, we're hoping to have it fully in place when we end of the first semester, so students will have some time within their schedule to do that. This also provides us some flexibility in the second semester for the AP teachers that one day a week, they can have all of their AP students and be continuing to practice for those exams that are coming up in May. So it won't just be for remediation for students, there'll also be some extension, supplementation.
So for students that don't need remediation, will that be sort of like a study hall?
Yep, so they could stay with their task block teacher to study. They could choose to go to the gym. So there's some students who might just need to burn off some energy at that time. They could go to an art class, they could go to their music class. So they, they have to be somewhere, but yes, it could be a send home time for me. But it could be making up tests, could be getting some additional support. Some of the math and science teachers want to use it, like, I'm going to have you all come on Wednesday because we're going to review it because we have a quiz on Thursday.
So right now with the four blocks, the kids that take AP courses in the first half of the year don't, haven't had any opportunity to stay on top of them to take the test at the end of the year.
Just some work after school that teachers have done with them.
Sorry?
Just some work after school that their teachers have done with them, but nothing within the schedule.
Right. So, so now you're saying they could use the task block to continue with that coursework, studying for the test through the second half of the year. But why wouldn't we go away from the four blocks? That's been discussed multiple times and I haven't seen a good rationale for staying with the blocks.
Yeah, we are looking, I know they had a committee last year, I think maybe it was pre-COVID and I think it stopped the COVID hit. So I've talked with some of the committee members on the work that they completed. We did do, we have some hybrid schedule this year, I think in the mid-flight with math and English classes, so that those students who need additional support are getting math the entire school year and are getting English the entire school year in addition to a reading lab. That also helped with their music numbers because they're alternating with a band, of course, a jazz band, I think, so that students could be in band without having to, for the whole year, without having to give up two periods of their classes. So we're looking at ways that we can try to work the schedule to be good for everybody.
But why, I mean, that sounds like it would be good for everybody. I just don't understand why we're sticking with the blocks.
There are, there are pros for keeping the block schedule. And so it's, we're trying to balance, you know, what are the...
What are those?
First off, kids can take more classes. So for example, my daughter in high school was in May, she was very much a science nerd. She's got a degree in forensics now. But she was able to take calculus, chemistry one, chemistry two, biology, advanced biology, anatomy, physiology, physics. And she couldn't have done all that if she was trying to take all those classes at the same time, about breaking into the semester, she could take, you know, I'm going to take physics and calculus here, I'm going to take chemistry and advanced biology here. And she was able to take that many classes without, you know, if she was trying to take that many at the same time, she just never would have been able to do it. So it does allow kids to, to focus and specialize in what they're doing. Absolutely limitations. I mean, they made it that if you took foreign language, you had to take one and two the same year. She had to take French one and French two the same year. They couldn't wait an additional year. So there were some things that they put in place to make sure you didn't have the possibility. So we are, we're looking at pros and cons of what is the best way to meet the needs of all the students with their schedule.
Yeah, I mean, the rationale that we were given a couple of years ago was that, that blocks were created to be more like college schedules. College schedules are not blocks, so...
That wasn't one reason I've heard, but, but yes, we are still working on the schedule. It's not a settled issue by any means.
Yeah. It just feels like if it's working for all of these, that you're, you're taking a portion of the school population and putting them into a different type of schedule and keeping another portion in the block schedule. It just doesn't make any sense to me.
This isn't for the whole school?
Task is for the whole school.
Yeah.
So they're doing it for the... But the extended math and English is not. It's only for the kids that need remediation.
Yeah, so with the understanding that, you know, we've got a diverse set of needs for our high school students, we're trying to accommodate this year with the extended, basically the extended course, over the course of a full year, for students who we've identified as perhaps struggling in the areas of mathematics or in the area of reading. And that could benefit from a full year of those classes. And so sort of right now, we have a hybrid model where the majority of our students are in that block, but we also are trying to experiment a little bit this year with students who might be in a year law course as well. Those are the two models.
Right, like, I get why you're doing that.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
The rest of it doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
So to Susan's point, though, I just want to make sure that everyone's going to be, so the AP tests are, the AP exams are in the spring.
Always.
So for the kids that took AP classes in the fall, they're not going to be at a disadvantage, I don't think, because they can still use that forty-minute period to sit with the other AP students? Will they be allowed to? So if a second semester AP class says, you know, let's get together on Wednesday...
There's only one second semester AP class. Most of them are first semester. The only second semester is our physics two class.
So I guess will the AP instructors from first semester reach out and still hold periodic review periods during the second semester for the kids that took their AP classes during the first semester?
At least once a week.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that it would be equitable for all the students that took the AP classes.
But you're, you're talking about that, like, first of all, the kids have to be super motivated to take the test in order to do the extra work, to go to the task period specifically for their AP classes.
We need to encourage them, right?
They're, they're going to sign up.
Yeah. If they signed up, they probably want to do well. So I just want to make sure that for that particular question that you were asking about, I wanted to make sure that it was just equitable for the kids in second and first.
I think if you looked at how many kids took first semester AP classes and didn't take the test, that number would be important to look at. That's a lot of kids. The other part of it is...
Maybe they will take it, though, with the extra preparation.
Maybe. I, I, I'm not convinced of that. But the other part of that is that you've got, sorry, I lost my train of thought.
You're talking about the forty-minute period?
Yeah, it was more to do with AP classes. You're trying to get more kids to take AP classes in a structure that does not work for AP classes. So if you're really trying to get more kids to take AP classes, make this schedule work for AP classes.
And I think that's what they're studying. I think that's what they're exploring.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that.
And so there has been a little bit of a delay in that study and in that research with our teachers that were formed, they had formed a committee just before the pandemic hit. And I think in that first year, they did an awful lot of work exploring pros and cons. We had people go out and visit other schools, take a look at what schedules look like in different locations, bring that information back. And again, weigh those pros and cons and try to, you know, get us closer to a model that's going to work for all students. And so again, the last, obviously, the last eighteen, twenty months, a lot of things have been just put on the back burner while we're dealing with more immediate needs. But I know that one of the priorities STEM has as our interim principal is to try to re-engage that group and to continue to make progress toward identifying a schedule that's going to work best.
Susan, when I was a teacher at Sohegan, we had a combination of block and traditional. One day a week, you have your odd classes, just me. One day a week, it would be the even classes for longer periods. And then on that third day, it would be every class.
Yeah.
So I, I'm sure you've looked at Sohegan's model. It was confusing. I think it was hard because when you missed a day, so I, I think also we should be looking at which model is best. I don't know if it is block scheduling, but I do think that the advantage of that forty-minute period isn't just for the AP students, it's for the kids that are behind, it's for the kids that might have an interest in something that they didn't get to fully explore. So I think it's a good opportunity. My, my only concern is that, I hope it's just not free for all and that a lot of the kids just aren't doing anything. So I hope that there's a way to keep it structured and, and I hope that there's a way to encourage the kids to take advantage of it.
And initially, again, the teachers will be doing the scheduling for the students. They'll be able to see what their grades are, what their missing assignments are. The teachers, before Monday morning, teachers who want to grab students will have already grabbed students. So if I know I'm doing a test review with these kids, I'm going to have already grabbed them before Monday.
Are the teachers in support of this?
Yeah, yeah, the majority are. We're still, that's part of our professional wellness, still is talking about, you know, the pros and cons of it looks good on it, still doing some training on the scheduling.
Initially, we had, our, the goal was to implement task block for the start of this new school year. But like most things, you know, you have to listen, right? You have to listen to your, to your staff in terms of their readiness to implement something new and something of, of this scale. And so what we did was we really just kind of put the brakes on a little bit at the end of the last school year and said, going through a lot of change in the district and at the school, let's take this fall to ensure that our teachers feel prepared and that our students understand what the benefits of this task block will really be for them. But let's move it more to the fall, I mean, up this break, to ensure that people are feeling confident about the model.
So how do you determine, how do the students decide what they want to do? Is that each day? Like, they can say, today I'm going to go to the gym, tomorrow I'm going to bed?
So Monday, they're scheduled for the week. And again, their, their task kind of home-based teacher is going to work with them to say, again, they'll be grabbed already by teachers. So if I know that this, you know, student needs to make up a test, I will already grab them through Wednesday. So when they even look at their schedule on Monday, they may already be familiar with my teachers who, I want to work with you on this day, I want to work with you on this day. If they have openings, then their home-based teacher will, will work with them to say, okay, well, I noticed you're missing an assignment on Monday. Or, oh, you, right now you're caught up, you know, where do you want to go on Friday? Or do you want to stay with me?
How they do attendance by this?
Yeah, it's through Power School. So it's, this is, the schedule is right in Power School, so it's, it's another class for the teacher and the teacher takes attendance, just like all the other parents do.
And because for the kids that are very unorganized or have issues, have COVID, this could be confusing on a weekly basis.
Yeah, that's understood. Bill gets important.
Yep.
Yeah, we've seen some great models in other schools where this has really been a model that, you know, we talk about portrait of a graduate and students really trying to take ownership of their learning, to be students that are goal-setting and identifying what some of their personal needs are. It's great, you know, right now, and for, for many students, it'll be about their teachers scheduling them. But truly, what we're hoping for is to be able to build skill sets in students, for them to be able to take a look at their current grades, talk about some self-reflection to say, geez, you know, I'm really struggling in mathematics and maybe that's something that I can set a goal for myself to improve by, you know, signing up to go to some classes. So we really want that for students and I think that those, that skill set will develop over time, as we've seen in this model, as we've been around the community.
The IP coordinators and stuff like that will be involved preparing this for the students.
Yeah, absolutely.
Case managers will have their students on Monday.
I hope so.
Yeah.
Not all of them necessarily, because some of the caseloads are over twenty. We're trying to limit the scheduling group to about thirteen. So they've already selected which thirteen they want to keep to, to help with the scheduling piece.
I will say, I turned my ninth grader to another district and they have exactly this model. And his ninth grade year has been the best year academically for him because he has the flexibility to go get the help he needs when he otherwise doesn't have the time because he's in class. This has been fantastic.
That's great. That's encouraging.
One of the things we're looking at also is performance assessments, so trying to get more of the students demonstrating their knowledge to us. So that is some of the budget increases, again, for art. They bought a new kiln that they budgeted for the shelves, then with COVID, they ended up not ordering them. But in order to, to try to get all the projects that the students are doing back to the students in a timely manner, she doesn't need the shelves for those. Photography needs three additional cameras so that the students can be out taking the pictures. Right now, we're having to take too a lot to do those stuff. English Language Arts for theater productions. So typically, theater was self-funding. They would ship money and they would use the money for the next year, but then they didn't have performances, so right now they don't have the money. So they're just trying to look to kind of jumpstart again, be able to start their performances and then hopefully they'll be self-funded again. Again, longer to build the sets for their productions. Color guard uniforms, and I've already asked how many. There's ten to twelve color guard participants, but sometimes they'd need more than one costume per year. So I haven't got the exact number of how many they're looking to purchase, but ten to twelve students, sometimes up to three costumes a year. And then storage shed for Pete Gee. I, John Gee showed me, so they have a very small storage room and he actually built a big storage box on wheels that fits perfectly into the doorway to fill the extra space that he has cabinets in and drawers in. And he has maximized every square inch space of that storage room and there's still a lot of room for this stuff. So he would like to build a storage shed in front.
So that's an indoor storage or...
No, it'd be outside. I know they, we talked with Bill about the place, I know that it would be outside the gym, kind of where the pop-ups are right now, in that area.
Is there potential to share them with athletics?
Say again?
Could, could that be shared with athletics to take away some of the additional storage burden from bigger athletic...
I guess.
I don't know how they...
We all have got what athletic could talk about.
They just have a lot of equipment.
They all do.
Yeah.
So we have it, middle school, high school. High school has, oh, in the athletic storage building, they also have the storage right next to Mark Moore's office that's filled with the maps and stuff. Just the equipment's huge. I know Mr. Demers, Mr. Godderson has the same issues with the maps over there and stuff.
For math, they're looking to replace and update their AP course textbooks. These are required by the college board to be updated every seven, ten years. And then the companion courses that aren't AP but are also the higher-level courses. So the decal, problem stats, and then the regular calculus and building stats. And that is a big hit. That one is a thirty-seven point five million dollars to replace those. Furniture, I used your same pictures because that's exactly what we're also looking for, is flexible seating for, for student grouping. Math department still has some of the old desks that are the top and the chair all fused into one. Very difficult to try to arrange, trying to get students to... They actually asked for twice that amount, twenty-four thousand. We did cut it in half and tried to look at other sources to try to fulfill the need or to stagger it in over time for that furniture. Trying to find, again, ongoing academic support for students. So we're going to start our teacher academic support center in December. Using the Power School MBA adapted scheduler, so that is a cost. They can also work after school with the teacher. We have our honor society tutors who come to the library after school. We have credit recapture work after school. We have a homework club for our summer school. And after you guys were talking, I thought, you know what? We can do a better job of advertising that to parents, making sure that they're aware of that. But summer school, based on the actual cost of it last year, it was a fifteen thousand, four hundred dollar increase over a bunch of us. So we're just asking to totally fund summer school for next year. Classical allotment, ninety-one percent. Regular education classes, nine percent. So for total classrooms, I moved in front of mine because I got thirty-six teachers and they don't own their classrooms, they share classrooms. But I have a couple of part-time teachers still in there with these seventy point six seven staff. The reason why anticipated class size is actually going up a little bit, even though I think we're only losing five students anticipated next year. One of the ATC teachers who's been teaching a social studies class needs to be full-time ATC next year. So he'll be absorbing those students into our teachers' classes. So really, primarily same. Any questions for me before I hand it off to Alison?
I just wondered if we have any idea what the total amount is for coming through.
Yes, we can work on generating that for you. Yep, as always, to each of our requests from the individual schools.
And if they're all looking at the same tables, maybe there's a, you know, value and a bulk purchase. And again, that's for funds somehow because they really are addressing social distancing and special bacterial covering.
Yeah, and the best thing about those tables also, those legs are so much sturdier than some of the tables you get. And they're adjustable for height, so if they can be A D A compliant, they change based on which classroom you put them in. Those are, they're really excellent.
I just had a question on the cameras. Is that the same cameras for ATC?
Yeah. So when we first did the budget, it looked very different. It's like in my second slide.
Okay. How much of that fifteen thousand dollars that you're anticipating as an increase for summer school is really related to COVID and learning loss and maybe potentially isn't going to still be an issue in the coming years?
So we had more pretensions last year than ever. And that is what kids still going to summer school. So that's why I'm saying over the next two years, I really feel like we're going to be able to support students' needs, especially starting with the task block, and hopefully not need it. But for this, for this next summer, I'm concerned that we still have that need. But next time, if I see you again in another year, we may not.
Maybe it's gone.
We can reduce it, yes. Any other questions?
Speak someone, some geniuses. This is part of the news up next to talk about the ATC budget.
Yeah, well, you probably already read the eleven programs that we offer. What's interesting is that the participation in ATC classes is going, is getting higher every single year. This year, we have five hundred and twenty-four of our students taking classes. Most of them are taking more than one, as you can tell, for a total of nine hundred and ninety-two courses. And what's also very interesting is that we also offer a lot of Gen Ed classes, which no one knows. They think that a full-time teacher in the ATC teaches full-time ATC classes, but that's not true actually. For example, you can see that we have an intro to culinary arts. It's not part of our culinary program. That's a teacher that is an ATC teacher, but teaches only full-time Gen Ed classes. Engineering, technology, and robotics, that's fifty percent of our pre-engineering program. And so you can see that if we add them all up, including the intro to psychology in social studies, we actually teach twenty-two sections. Every teacher teaches six sections, teaches eight sections. So every six in here, you have two more that are the prep time. So in reality, out of my twelve point six seven teachers, strange number, right? Actually, about four of them are, could have been, are teaching Gen Ed classes. So the next part is that in the past, when you looked at the ATC's budget, you looked at the ATC, you looked at business education, home economics, tech ed, and photography under the visual arts program. And we did that again this year. And after I finished all the work, I went to Jane and I said, this is insane. We have to stop doing this. And Jane was very kind, and you will appreciate the fact that instead of having to look in five different places, from now on, you're only going to be looking at one place. So all of this has been incorporated into the ATC's budget. So before I start talking about that, I also wanted to mention that we are offering more and more industry-recognized credentials and running starts. Every year, there's more than there was last year. We're hoping that in the next, you know, four, five years, every single class will be there, a running start class, or we'll be offering an industry-recognized certificate. And for those who don't know what IRCs are, they are qualifications like passing the SolidWorks exam for our engineering students and having a credential, a piece of paper from a recognized source that allows them to go and actually look for a job. OSHA ten is another one, and so on. So when I came two years ago, this is my third year, I have joked about it. I felt like I came to a third-world country. The ATC was falling apart, the ATC had so many needs. And both the budget board and the school board and our administrators and everyone around me has been extremely supportive. So that sleeping giant is awake. And it needs one more year to be a real giant and not a sleeping giant. So this is the final year of investment in a big scale. After that, we should be in a good position with all our computers, all our equipment and all that. Another reason why this is going to be the last year of major investment in the ATC is because with the renovation in twenty-six, twenty-seven, the state will pay for seventy-five percent of everything. We are talking a new addition to this building that does not exist right now. They will pay for their lights, for their desks, for their computers, for new equipment. So we need to stop spending now after this year so that they can pay for seventy-five percent of their next round of expenses. So we already did major improvements in our culinary arts. I put this picture in here because I think it's really cool. He teaches in our culinary program, Chef Levin teaches, and there's literally a camera kind of following him around. So the kids at the back can actually see what he's doing. Or he's cooking with someone who's in a restaurant in Boston. That's the Oyster House in Boston. So Mike Levin and the chef over there were cooking together. It's pretty great, right? Well, how else can you do these things? So and for this, we used our Perkins money for video production. It does not look like anything like it looked like last year, and that was all Perkins. Graphic arts, we shared, the Perkins and our district shared the expense for the new Max. If you haven't taken a tour of the ATC in a long time, I'd love for you to come and see it. It's pretty cool. I wouldn't have said that two years ago. We are also need to make some major improvements in accounting and finish up a couple of little things in culinary. So the big ticket item that I know all of you were like, what? Is the replacement equipment. Six-year-old computers in pre-engineering are kind of getting to the end of their lifetime. Even if we were using them just for word processing, a six-year-old computer would be kind of older. Now, same, pre-engineering needs graphic cards that are fast. Those are not fast. So that's one of the major expenses. Accounting laptop computers. We are getting our students for the first time finally this year certified in QuickBooks. I mean, for those of you with children here, you should send them to that class and then have them do your taxes. That's what I would do. Seriously. So those, QuickBooks does not run on Chromebooks. We looked into the online version. I really was, I'm not going to lie, I was against their laptops initially until I figured out that, okay, you know, there really is no other way. We also cut down that number by a lot. The initial number was closer to twenty-five thousand. And then Jerry said, I can get you slightly cheaper. We are also trying to account for the fact that these computers that are going to be slightly cheaper by next year because newer, better ones will be out. So we think that's a good number for that. And video production, I will tell you my joke about how a seventeen-year-old video production camera is the same as a seventeen-year-old cellphone. I mean, I have a friend who until last year had a flip phone. But we kind of can't really continue with the flip phones. We have three cameras. We are only asking to replace one of them next year because one of them is coming out of our Perkins this year. We are going to buy it within the next month, I think. And the other one, I'm going to be writing DOE reserve grant in January. And I know I'm going to get it because they are so old that if any one of them breaks right now, we are going to be in a lot of trouble. I was writing in my responses to your questions that like, that's one of my biggest fears right now. John Tiger, who teaches that class, teaches all four blocks. He's more or less the only teacher teaching all four blocks. There were something like four hundred and twenty requests for video production. If we are one camera down, I don't know what's going to happen in there. And so the plan is to make sure that this year, we get the first one through Perkins, the second through the reserve grant, which is a competitive grant, right? And then this will be the third one. So I'm not asking you to pay for the first one, I'm asking you to pay for the third one. And in terms of software, we now have, okay, any questions? I'm not talking as fast as I can. In terms of software, it looks like a big number, but one explanation is that for the business education software, we buy it every year. We looked into it, and if we buy it for three years instead of each one year, within the three years, we save like two thousand dollars. That's a lot of money. So I think that that's worth it. If you said, we don't want to spend that, the first thing that I would do is take the extra three years out. And we could do that, but I really wouldn't recommend that. It's a good deal. SolidWorks and software, that's like every single year. It's a big expense, and there is no way around it. We either teach SolidWorks or we don't. And this year, we're going to get the students certified. Biotechnology, technology, and biomedical sciences. It's not really new software. It's the software and the curriculum materials that go towards getting our students certified. We're going to be the first center in the state that tries to get their students at this level of certification. So it could be a one-year expense, but I can tell you that the whole state is watching because they are waiting to see how we do this year so that they can plan to follow after us. Video production and graphic arts, obviously, can't teach those without Adobe. In addition, we buy a hundred licenses. The ATC only uses forty of them. So when last year, I went to Adobe and I said, I am not paying for this. This is COVID. I don't want a hundred-person license. I want a forty-five one. And they were like, oh, okay, we'll help you. We'll make an exception, but only for one time because it's COVID. And then the week after, everyone's crying. Where did Adobe go? Our superintendent had no Adobe. So we had to go back to plenty. So unfortunate, a big expense. Accounting, of course, I talked about QuickBooks and the fact that we will have children that are smarter than, well, than me when it comes to taxes. And general supplies, that number looks very bad when you look at it in the budget, but actually, it's a decrease. It's a decrease in the sense that we combined so many things that had supplies that the number skyrocketed. But really, if you add them all each separately, we are a thousand and sixty below. Any questions on the increases?
Can you just talk a little bit about the types of jobs that kids graduating from high school, not going out to college, are more qualified for because of the certifications and the things that you've added in the last couple of years?
I can press eventually.
So the purpose of the ATC is, for many people, the purpose of the ATC is to prepare students for work. But that's not necessarily true because there aren't that many jobs that you can get in engineering or in biotechnology right after high school. So some of the certifications are to prepare them, for example, for college, right? Our biotechnology class, our valedictorian was in it. Hollis Brookline's valedictorian was in it. These are high flyers, that, these are high-flying programs that these certifications help these students, prepare them better even for college. And I will tell you something else. Our students that are SolidWorks, that have taken the SolidWorks class, when they go to UNH, they are given the option for the EZA or to only submit the two major assignments and be done with a class. So we are saving them money in college. We're saving them time because they are very first semester. They have one class less or they can get the EZA. In terms of video production, graphic design, and accounting, these certifications and these softwares also help us place the students. The number-one goal of the state right now is how to give real-world opportunities to our students. And we do that, in my next slide, through several different ways. We do it through internships, through externships, through ELOs, extended learning opportunities, and work-based learning. And work-based learning is the ATC's, like, number-one task for this year and next year. Placing kids in the industry. We cannot do that if we have students that don't know how to use Adobe. Who's going to hire a kid to do marketing or to do any kind of graphic design? So actually, I used that as an example because one of our students just started with a company in Amherst. It's a three-month-long internship. So we're hoping that this will prepare them for that. And I will add more to that here. Any more questions? I have some information, but it's on the next one. Request decreases. We asked for eighteen thousand dollars less in new equipment because, like I said, we're done with the new stuff. It's now about replacing and maintaining. And then in new furniture, we spend, we have eight thousand dollars less. But I will tell you that in truth, not only do we have eight thousand less, but we also used our Perkins grant and we bought furniture for around thirty thousand dollars last year in video production, in, well, mostly in video production and other places that we did them. Now, in terms of where does this all lead? You were like, what do we get at the end of this? Why are we doing this? So here's a few things. We are getting great for the renovation. And literally, the ATC occupies like twenty percent of the floor space. So we're going to get that part. I'm hoping that no matter what else happens in this world, we're getting a new ATC. And we are going to continue updating programs. And I put it in writing because I want to make sure that we are all on the same page. But yes, this is the final year. We want to increase out of this participation. And that has been pretty difficult. And we are making efforts to increase these numbers. Right before COVID, we had twenty-eight kids sign up. Obviously, with COVID, they couldn't come at all. We got ten. It's a problem. You lose momentum. You know, you make all this effort to get people to come to you, and then they can't come to you, and then it's over. So we are back now on getting things done. So one of the things, we are participating in everything. We are inviting everyone under the sun. Like, at the beginning of the meeting, I emailed the two of you guys, Jen, that we have the new assistant superintendent from Sohegan is coming to visit the week after. We had just had the executive director of the New Hampshire Principals Association come and visit and write about us in the media and stuff. Last year, despite COVID, we gave four interviews with our students and things that were actually printed. were actually printed in the union leader and stuff like that. So there's a lot to do with word of mouth and people coming into the building to see what we can offer and my hands were tied during COVID in that respect. Um, I like health. We talked about Essar quite a bit today. Let me say one thing about Essar. Let's say this carpet is from nineteen ninety-five. Am I right, Bill? Ninety-six?
Two thousand and three.
Two thousand and three. Let's say that during COVID, we were moving furniture and we ripped a huge hole in it. It's, it's, it's ruined. Can we use Essar money? Because it happened during COVID while we were moving furniture? No. Carpets, desks, uh, tables, those are our job. This is the job of the district. This is what we need to provide to our students. So Essar is very open-ended in some ways, but it's also very tight. It's, there's like, has to always be a separation between what is the job of the district to provide and what is the job of the grant to provide or the government or the whoever. And so we are, the Essar specifically said that it can be used for the creation of new CTE programs. And we were like, huh, here's how we save money. So for the first year, uh, that we wanna create this program, we are putting a hundred percent of the teacher's salary and benefits into the grant. We are putting about thirty thousand dollars for equipment because we're gonna have to create this from scratch. We are gonna use our Perkins fund, around thirty thousand also for supplies and obviously I'll be writing more grants uh, for that. So we are looking to start a health science for no initial cost instead of like a two-hundred-thousand-dollar cost to get started. So that's good news. And then um, the bad news is the space. We really don't have space. So we have teachers complaining about being in cars. There's gonna be more complaining this year because there's gonna be one more teacher in cars. I also um, want to make sure that this program addresses the needs of our community and the only way to do this is to create this with our community. So a lot of other CTE programs have LNA programs. Is that the right thing for our community? Maybe medical assistance would be a better choice for our community. So we're gonna work with the medical community to figure out in which director, which one we go, what start the needs of the industry. They, I can tell you now that we dropped it last year because I knew we weren't gonna get a teacher and many others failed in that. And again, we are not gonna spend one penny of the Essar money or any money unless we have a teacher signed up and ready to go. Um, the second year of the program, fifty percent of the teacher's salary and benefits are gonna be in the Essar and fifty percent on the district and then twenty percent on the Essar and the rest in the district. That way we phase out and if it's not working for us, we sell everything. It's all came from grants anyway and uh, we decide again. By that time, we'll be getting ready to go also in the new building, but in three years from now, we'll know whether this is happening or not, right? So we can make more decisions. About the um, childcare, the purpose of CTE is not to provide childcare, the purpose of CTE is to prepare teachers, right? So the purpose of a program like that in Milford would be to take our high schoolers and to give them experience. We can give them experience by sending them to the middle school, which is right next door to us. They can go every day for A Block to Heron Pond to help out or to Jac's. There's many ways to do that. The most complicated way to do it is to bring the children in. You really need a structure that is planned. You need a, an exterior door, these children can never, ever, ever enter the mainstream in the school. So there's a lot. In terms of that program, that can only be done with a, in a new building. If that's the direction we really wanna go, we need to hurry up because we need to add it. It doesn't exist in the new building right now. And um, all this money we've been spending, it's to create more opportunities for kids, for students, but also to upgrade the programs. So in the past years, I think I'm proud of many things with, here in Milford, but I think that the difference between the curriculum that I found being taught and the curriculum that is being taught right now is the thing I'm the most proud of. Um, we've done such an amazing job as a team uh, in creating, expanding our programs. This year, we are offering brand-new classes. We're looking to offer more new classes next year. I always joke that Milford is unique and uh, it's also unique in a very strange way. Until five years ago, the Perkins Grant was only allowed to be used for eleventh and twelfth graders. In the last five years, we can use it for ten, eleven and twelve year graders. But here in Milford, it's always been used for ninth and twelfth graders. Are we like videotaping this? Oh, okay, so I don't know where to go to tell you that this is illegal. Uh, so. So ninth graders need to get out of the CTE courses, which means we need to create those feeder courses for them where they get a very, an understanding of what it is and you all wait and where teachers have to do their, their best work so that these kids will come back. We are also the only center in New Hampshire that offers like two, maybe three classes in a row whereas everyone else is offering four. It's always been four. And um, Concord is moving in a six. The last two are gonna be working in the community. So we have to like, figure this out. I already talked about community engagement and of course, I already gave you the list of all the important things that the DOE prioritizes and as uh, the recipients of uh, state and federal grants, we have no choice but to go. And that's my presentation.
Got some great photos on your next slide.
Oh, so yesterday, yesterday, I was at Hudson, they just finished her renovation. And they did it the smart way and the not smart way. The not smart way was that they didn't uh, figure out all their needs well in advance. So after the building was done, they were waiting to get more money. Not a good day for any school board, any school district, but they did get it. And then the next part is that they took advantage of the CTE um, upgrades to upgrade everything else. Um, I will show you some pictures. I will start by saying that it's not the walls or the floor coverings or the curtains that make a good school. It's the teachers and the students. And we have both. We have amazing students and amazing teachers. We really do. And I can't wait to see how much better the education of our students is gonna be once our walls and our floors and our curtains look like this. This is the corridor to the ATC over there. This is the welding and precision machining program. It's like a shop, so up there where I was taking the picture, that's where the shop manager is, the classroom is up there and things like that. Um, not a great picture. They have what they call a career development center. So in that room, they just hired a part-time teacher who will be working with students to create resumes, to create portfolios, all the things that these kids need to go get a job, whether they go to college or not, because we all know that college kids need jobs, right? Otherwise.
Just, what school is this at?
Alvar in Hudson.
Hi.
That was.
I know it.
Yesterday morning. Um. This is the entryway to the upstairs and it, it looks very pretty, but what I wanted to say is that the green colors, you will see them in some of the pictures on the floors. So they are using different color carpets to tell people where to run, uh, if there is anything bad happening, where is like the blind spot. So in this room, for example, that area would be a different colored carpet so the kids know that that's a safe place. This, uh, and the architects are the same architects that we are working with, the same architects that Oyster River Middle School worked with. I took the tour last, about a month ago and I literally was like, are there any jobs here? Like just for the building, it's so beautiful. Uh, and then this is their pre-engineering lab. So what they did in a lot of their programs, it's because they expect them to grow, is that they put the engineering lab in the middle and they have two classrooms on the left and on the right. Same thing with their um, other programs. This, this is um, um, marketing. So I have only seen this cla, kind of classroom at UNH's Paul College for Business. They are the only place that I have seen this. It's like industry standards and have all kinds of stuff. This is their outdoor classroom, it was raining pretty hard at that moment. They just had about a few weeks ago Shakespeare in the Yard performance or something like that and apparently they use that outdoor classroom all of the time. Um, construction, health science, two classrooms on both sides of the lab. Uh, and that's it? Just so you can take a quick look at what that money will do.
Any questions for Basso? Basso, thank you so much. And Tina Thibodeau is our executive director of Student Support Services. She'll talk through her budget next.
So, um, we've been spending some time already talking about Student Support Services. There was a question earlier on about our PARA-2 certification and how many staff in our district have that second level or that PARA-2. We have twenty-five staff members who have that. That's quite an accomplishment to have twenty-five, which is a, almost about twenty-five percent or a little even higher of our staff have that second, um, certification. If we think about Student Support Services, this is our second year. We used to be called Special Services. And I just wanted to, if we think about, people will say, well, you know, what, what is it that you do? And it's real, right? This, so it's really our job to work with all the building principals to make sure that students who have unique learning and that there are any, um, and that uh, they're well-being. So that's where you'll see the, our special education, our students who need accommodations. Um, we work with students with homelessness, but I wanna bring your attention to our MTSS for Behavior. Two years ago, we as a district submitted for a grant through the Bureau of Student Wellness through the Department of Ed. And the grant was to um, work with our district to talk about what are the services or supports that we have for students? And you know, we use the word behavior, so I'm gonna use the word well-being. What supports do we have? And through that effort, we started to identify some of our strengths and some of our challenges. And that, we still have portions of that grant, but we went from a grant from the Department of Ed to Essar and said, we can use the Essar funds, again, it's a one-time intervention and our multi-tiered system of support for Behavior Coordinator is working with Jac's and Heron Pond to look at that universal or that tier one, what are our systems in place? Then she'll look at tier two and tier three so that we can support. And I may be before you in a year or two, asking in the operational budget, do we need an MTSS coordinator? Or do we have enough of that systemic piece in place that we can then implement it? So we've talked a lot about the ELL or English as a Second Language. Currently, our program has forty-seven students. Last year, we had forty-one students. Um, we have one ELL teacher and we have a part-time para-associate to support. Recently, there was new state guidance that came out. The National School District did have a complaint, sorry my dogs.
Don't you?
Um, the National School District did have a rather large complaint, so if you talk to other school districts, um, they were watching that to say, you know, where, where is this going to come out? What are the services that we need to do? The Department of Ed issued a new state guidance. And the new state guidance is now directing districts based on the state assessment for ELL students or the access test. If a student falls on uh, between one point oh and two point nine, based on that score, they should have two hours of direct, uh, two hours of a day of direct instruction. That's quite different. Twenty percent of our population would fall into that. So I'm standing before you saying, based on this new guidance with one ELL teacher and a para, we can't do it. So then what we've done is we've submitted for Essar for a second ELL teacher, so that's why you see the two there. Currently, we have that position posted, um, but what I would like to do is put into the operating budget, a third ELL teacher to meet that forty-seven number. We looked around to our other districts who have similar numbers and they're looking at between four and five teachers for the ELL population. So what we've identified is based on this new guidance that we need to increase our staff um, to move forward. Here's a little bit about what the responsibility of an ELL program is in a school district. The other piece is that we have five buildings that our teacher has to go to. Our hope is when we have the three teachers, we'll be able to have people designated within grade levels. Any question about ELL? No? Okay. As part of this, what you'll see is we're looking to take that paraprofessional position, which is part-time, and move it into an ELL teacher. The next piece is, um, we talked a little bit about, Jade mentioned it, a BCBA. Currently, we have one for our district and that's essentially four buildings for one staff. What we've identified is that that's not enough to provide the amount of services that we need. So what we would like to do is have an additional BCBA and again, look at maybe doing an elementary BCBA and high school BCBA so that we can provide those intensive services, but also look at helping students be successful in the classroom so that we can start supporting our classroom teachers when students who have intensive needs are in their classroom. So we're looking for another support for our classroom teachers.
Are you seeing an increase in need or are you already doing um, RBT certification or training for your paras?
That's excellent. So last year, I stood before this committee and we talked about a registered behavior technician and it was approved. So now we're looking at, um, we have a position posted, a paraprofessional RBT. So yes.
But are, are your existing paras able to, on their own or through PD funds or something, just get the certification if they want it?
They are.
Great.
Yep. And so what would happen is with the BCBA, if we had someone certify as an RBT, that's another level of support that we would be able to provide to students. And this is our, uh, for our BCBA, the increase we're asking for. Here's another one for, um, right now, we have students who have IEPs, who have intensive medical needs. We're asking for an increase of ninety-two thousand and these are students who needs are for mobility, respiratory, feeding. One of the questions that I knew I might get asked is, could we train a paraprofessional to do some of these services? And essentially, looking at the students' medical needs, right? The answer would be, we're, we're really not able to, but I wanted to just stand before you and say that we did look at what are our other options.
So this is kind of mandatory, this one, I mean, this is something we have to provide.
We, I'm asking for the increase in funds, but yes.
So would you use the funds to hire a nurse or to hire contracted nursing, which from what I understand is gonna be more expensive? Would, would it be more feasible to try to hire a nurse? I know we've had issues.
Yes, so.
Why do nurses?
So we do have a, uh, did, we have a posting for a nurse to provide these services. So far, we haven't gotten anyone, but we would be looking at either contracted or if we could hire a nurse, that would be great too.
So would the dollar amount go down if we could hire a nurse?
So one of the things that Jade would say is that when you look at hiring a full-time nurse with all of the benefits and looking with a contract nurse, they're very close.
Can I ask another question about your ELL teacher?
Yes.
That was at one-twelve, is that just? Is that just the salary for one teacher?
And benefits. And benefits, full-time.
And that's the going rate for the ELL teacher?
We budget at a master's level eight in terms of, for budgeting purposes, right? And then there are times when we might hire somebody that is a bachelor's level, less experienced. And there's times, right, where we might actually be ahead of that. But that's pretty standard in terms of all of the educators that we hire for budgeting purposes, master's level.
We did do this one just a little bit higher because when we did go through our budgeting, Santina pointed out that a lot of the people that would be holding the degrees that we are looking for are going to be at the more top of our scale just because of their experience and their education. Kind of like a psychologist would be, right?
And at this point, with new state guidance, all the other districts, if they weren't appropriately staffed, they're also all looking for it. Any last questions? Or?
This is just providing services, right? So if you were to hire a full-time nurse, but they have to go through the loopholes of, I mean, like, jump through the hoops of the DOE to go through the certification process? Because that seems, for us, that was the hardest thing. Because that, we, there's tons of nurses who want to work, but can't get certified through the DOE for whatever reasons. And so hiring has been very, very difficult for nursing.
So what would be happening is, and I won't confirm this with the DOE, but the DOE certifications are for school nurses. When you are a building-level school nurse, we would be looking at a nurse for an individual street. But that's a great question.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mrs. Tibido. Thanks for your great work with the budget presentation. Now, preparation, I should say. Next up is our Assistant Superintendent, Mrs. Donna McGoode, who will talk to you about the budget preparations for curriculum and instruction and professional training.
Thank you so much, everyone. So as you can see, the budget for curriculum instruction and professional learning actually has a decrease of $23,000 this year, even though we're adding in some things to our budget that we took out of the school budget, but you'll see. So when we looked at the plans that we were moving forward in our budget, two of our strategic plan goals came to effect. So we're looking at student success and we're looking at the school culture. All right. So here are some of the things that we decided to do. Mr. DeMarest and Mr. Saunders both spoke about the Open Up English language. So what happens is, when you first, when we first introduce a program into the district, the district picks up the first year. So currently, the Open Up English goes to sixth grade. Next year, we want to expand it to seventh grade. So we'll be taking care of that cost. So that's going to be part of our budget. We're also looking at using the universal design, universal by design. So what we're doing is, we're taking a look at our curriculum and making sure that it lines from kindergarten straight up to 12th grade. We're doing that in both of our English language, the three here that you see, the English language, the math, and science. So we have professional development that we're offering to our staff that will allow them to meet and meet with either outside sources or as teams to look at their curriculum and make sure that what you're teaching in kindergarten and then it moves up to second is the next, I mean, first grade will be the next step, and then second grade will be the next step, all the way through high school. So we're doing that in all three of our areas of English language, math, and our science. We are doing it throughout, but we're focusing on one area at a time. And then one of the other things that we'll do, one of the other things that came into our budget, we took out of the budget from a lot of our buildings, some of the software that they were using because we found that each building was using software. But if we bought it as a whole, it was cheaper for us. So instead of buying 200, you know, there, 200 there, 200 there, we just absorbed it and we buy 600. By doing that, it's driving the cost down for us. Then we're also looking at not only the educational wellness, but the health and wellness of our students. So these are some of the areas that we're going to be expanding and moving forward with. So we have our Choose Love program, which is our SEL program, where we have, that's run by Scarlett Willis. Her child is one of the students that was, or she said, was murdered in the Sandy Hook shooting. And so she has, this program is from, it's the Choose Love program that the state of New Hampshire has actually adopted into their curriculum as well. And so we are working with them to provide services for our students. And it's all about the social, emotional, you know, behavioral health, mental health, wellness, all those types of things go into there. In our elementary level, we're going to continue working with our, and consolidating with the CAFCY council group, and they help with behavioral. If there's any behavioral issues or anything going on in our buildings, they can support. And I know, of course, you can probably speak a little bit more on that because you're part of that. Responsive training, that is the training that we offer to our staff. I know that that was mentioned earlier. We want to continue with that. We do currently have, a majority of our staff have already been trained in that. But with new staff coming in, we want to make sure that the new staff are now going to be trained in that. And then we have what's coming in is our SWISS system. So what that does is that tracks any behavioral data that we have. And then that way, the team can sit down and take a look at it and see where do we need to go? Where are we seeing these issues? You know, are we seeing a student that is coming out every day during math? You know, so maybe it's not a behavioral issue, it's a math issue. So we need to address the math issue that's going on with this student. And then the other piece that we're looking at is, how are we going to provide this to our staff? So we do PLC meetings where our staff, our staff can get together. I know that, that was mentioned earlier, our staff get together and they talk about what are we doing as a group, right? So the science department gets together sometimes. We have multi-levels, so we may have someone from the middle school and the high school and the elementary school kind of get together. But our PLCs is where they kind of look at the data and align, and they can work on some of their lining of their curriculum. So we, you know, what is it doing? It's giving the ability for our educators to really take a look at the curriculum that they're teaching and make sure that there's follow-through in each grade level is, you know, we don't want a child to get up in the upper levels and have missed anything from the lower levels. We want to make sure that it's rolling up as we go along. We also have what's called Frontline. It's our PLM system where the staff can go in, and this is for professional development for our staff. So our staff can go in and register for any type of professional development. And it tracks and holds onto their server any curriculum or any types of workshops or anything that they go to. So when they have to recertify, their numbers are right in there. So they're not carrying around these big books or having to log all their numbers and worrying, you know, in three years, what did I do? I went to a workshop last, you know, three years ago in September. Where is that certificate? You know, they can't find it. So this way, it holds onto it for them and it makes it an easier process for them. As well as we can see what some of the needs are, you know. If we notice that we have a lot of teachers that are going out for certain items, we can track that and say, all right, maybe it's something that we should bring into our building because it's obviously an area of interest for our staff. And then one of the other important things that we started on, we really are going to work hard on moving forward with is our new teacher mentoring program. So what we do is, any new teacher to the Milford School District is assigned a mentor. And this mentor works with this new teacher all year long. And they help them with anything from introducing them to the new staff, to how to use a copier, to where the bathroom is, to, you know, how to get out the front door. What if there's an emergency, what do you do? To working on the curriculum and sitting down with them and say, how do I plan? How do I do this? You know, where do I go if I have questions regarding, you know, professional development? Or who do I speak to for certain things? And so we're finding that, that's one way to help keep our new teachers in our district, is giving them that support that they need. Because we all know, you know, it's not easy when you're a first-year teacher. And so giving them the support of somebody that has. And the mentor teachers are selected by the building principals. So we look for, you know, the proximity. We want them to be in the same building. We want them to kind of be, you know, if it's a first-grade teacher, having another first-grade teacher, that's great. Sometimes you can't do that, but somebody in the same area. So we're not taking a kindergarten teacher and having their mentor be a high school teacher. We want it to be someone that's in the same area with them in the same building. I think that does it, that does it for me. Does anyone have any questions? Questions, comments, concerns?
I have a question. So there's, I think there's a lot of confusion and miscommunication about critical race theory and whether it's part of our social, emotional learning, programming, curriculum, whatever. Can you just speak to that? So whoever watches this meeting can understand what it is and what it isn't and that it's not part of our curriculum system.
I can't say I'm not about going over this a little more, too.
Sure, absolutely. I think there's something out there right now that folks, there's some belief that critical race theory or discrimination teaching is in line with or is connected somehow to social, emotional learning. And that is not accurate. At least, it's not accurate as it relates to the teaching and learning happening here in the Milford School District. And so with regard to critical race theory, you know, at this point, we've made it very clear that that is not something that is not the teaching of the Milford School District. We've asked all of our educators to teach facts in honest, you know, information about history and about topics. But to stay away from opinions about the topics in which they teach. Again, we're not seeing in our district that there is any sort of an issue related to discrimination about those teachings. Social, emotional learning can otherwise be identified as student and staff wellness. These are the important aspects of teaching that's built into a lot of what we do on a regular basis. As I was speaking with a parent that asked a concerning question of, do you teach social, emotional learning? And if so, starting at what grade level? I said, yes, actually. It's a very important aspect to our teaching. And we incorporate aspects of social, emotional learning right at the preschool level and all the way up. So what might it look like? It might look like in an English class that a piece of literature might incorporate two friends that have shown empathy, right? So if the topic of social, emotional learning is helping children to understand empathy, we might do that through a text series. We're trying to teach children how to appropriately interact and to socialize. We do that through social, emotional learning as it might incorporate into a math class. We put students in small groups, helping them to learn not only the math topics, not only to learn how to problem solve through a, through maybe a challenging math equation, but we're also trying to help them to learn how to develop the strategies to work together with their peers. That's social, emotional learning as it looks in the Milford School District. Lots and lots of examples of what it might look like in a preschool classroom, all the way up through. But it's definitely infused into the curriculum, off-curriculum at grade levels and in various departments. A little taste of what that is? I mean, I could go on all day long. Oh, go ahead, Chris.
I would just want to add that, to piggyback that, that this is not new, but that our school counselors have taught the very same lessons around friendship, bullying, health and wellness, self-care, since forever.
I think it's just a new name, right? We've been teaching this for years. When I was a teacher, you know, 20 years ago, 25 years ago, I was teaching this to my students, right? Because we want them to all get along. We don't want, you know, when there's an argument, we teach them how to talk to each other, to work through it. So it's something that we've been teaching all along. I think now it just has a title to it. And I think that's what's sparking that, is there's now a title to that.
And another important part is the responsive classroom training. That's all based on SEM.
Yes, exactly.
That's always based on.
And that's been out for years, right? We've been doing that for years.
I did that for 25 years.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to say too, I know at Heron Pond, they have the Helping Hand Award. So each week, if your kid is caught doing something kind, considerate, empathetic, they're identified by their teacher and their name goes into a hat. And then at the end of the week, they're basically, all the names are put together and a name is chosen to be the helper of the week. It's a great way to promote helping each other, being kind to each other, developing compassion and tolerance. And I know also, that's what our district has been doing from day one. The helping, I mean, the Lunch Bunch Group, which helps kids that are going through any type of, you know, situation that might be traumatic for them. That's been going on for at least a decade, which is an amazing program. And also, I think that the curriculum component is really just our Choose Love, which again, focuses on tolerance, acceptance, being kind to one another, working together toward common ground. And I think it would be wonderful, I know that the Assistant Superintendent had mentioned to me possibly at some point, having the founder of that program come in to one of our school board meetings and do a presentation about what that curriculum really focuses on. I think it would help address some of that uncertainty and some of those misnomers that are spread by misinformation. So thank you much for clarifying both of those components.
And Choose Love was identified during the pandemic as we were coming back to school to try to address the challenges that many of our students experienced while being remote, while being out of school. Interesting, I talked with some of the high school students up here that said, you know, that they openly say that, you know, academics is one thing, but they forgot in all their time, you know, being remote, they forgot how to appropriately interact with one another. They're asking for some skill development around how to, around social skills. And so again, nothing new about social, emotional learning. I think back in the 90s, when I first started my teaching career, we called it character education, just helping students to learn the skills that are necessary to be successful in school and also out in life. And so, but I'm pleased and, you know, I'd be very happy to spend some time presenting, helping to inform the community and others about the topic of critical race theory and about social, emotional learning. In fact, actually, the best way to do that would be to actually ask some of our educators to come and talk about how are they incorporating these topics, these lessons, into their everyday lessons or into their everyday classrooms? So certainly something that we'll look at putting together and helping to inform the community.
Thank you, Mrs. McGoode.
Thank you.
Nice job. All right. Technology Department is up next, followed by V and G. So hang in there, everybody.
The knowledge is really fast.
All right.
Okay. So not my skill set for the start of that. But not a lot's happening with technology right now. There are a few asks that we have going time out of what happened with the pandemic and the fact that we suddenly had to go to one-to-one. We knew this was coming. It didn't go the way we anticipated it, the whole pandemic thing. But we did create a one-to-one model. We've got stuff up and running at various schools. Now we have to support it. And there's a lot of stuff around that that I want to talk through that. So we have about 20, 300 kids, 20, around there. We needed 200 or 300 spare computers because they break. So the number I'd like to stay at is around 2,500 working Chromebooks in the district at all times. So the math works out really well if you divide it by five. But what I'm discovering is that five might be a little bit optimistic about how long these devices are going to last. And we're learning this because this is the first year we're really doing one-to-one. We currently have probably 100 devices that have gone down. And I anticipate that to continue as the year goes on. So I'm thinking we may have to change this number to the usable life of the Chromebook, it's really four years, which would bump that up to about 600 devices a year. So that might be the goal going forward. And we're learning this as we go. So this was the plan when we set this all up, but we may have to change that. But despite the 500 and 600, I want 900 this year. And there's a reason for that. The reason is, we have two things we have to worry about. And Bill brought part of this up. One of the things we have to worry about is this device is failing. The other one is that if they go out of support, we have a problem. And it's not just that they're dangerous to not be supported by the district. There is a state law around this. So there's this state law called Hospital 1612 that says we cannot use devices that are not supported. And the rationale is exactly what we've already said. If it's not supported, that means it's not being updated. And usually, they end up being updated because they've been, there's an exploit. So we would be using devices that could be exploited. And you guys probably know this, and I've maybe said this before, but the number one most sought-after data on the internet is student data. Have you guys heard this story? Okay. So this is kind of important to know. We are the target. And the reason we're the target is because in today's societies, younger kids are getting social security numbers and a whole bunch of information that's very valuable that they don't use for years. So if you can hack, you know, a second or a third grader's account, you have their life. until they're 16. And then they go out and try and do something with, get their first card, do whatever it is, and they discover at that point that their personality's been compromised. So we are always under attack. We have to be very aware of that. The states are aware of that, and that's what the HB 1612 is about, is we are responsible as a school to protect them from that. So that ties into the fact that we have 900 devices that are expiring this year. And that happened because years ago, we were trying to roll out Chromebooks, and one year we had two spare phones, some excess funds at the year into the airway of device management devices. That's all coming to fruition right now, we have to support it. Going forward, I think we can slowly level that out, but this year we have to solve this problem. Next year we have to add those devices. So I'm asking for the 900 devices. The good news is, there's some brands out there that will help pay for these. There's the Emergency Connectivity Fund, the ECF Fund, which we've applied to five devices, that hasn't been approved yet. And there's also S3. So we've applied for both of these, seeing if one of these will cover some of our devices. So hopefully we'll only be able to buy 400, but stay tuned. Any questions on all that? Software needs. So Printer Logic, we had the little demonstration just earlier of why we need Printer Logic. So the cool thing about one-to-one is every student has a device in their hands. The uncool thing about one-to-one is Google stopped supporting cloud printing about two years ago. That was the software that let us manage student printing. So now we don't really have a solution for student printing. So at this point, hopefully this isn't getting on television, students have kind of free reign of the printing environment, and we don't have a good way to manage that because we can't trace back who's printing things. So this piece of software, Printer Logic, helps us manage that. So if you go into Printer Logic, you can say, "There's 150 pieces of colored paper over there, and that was printed, you know, by Judy." So Judy may or may not have needed those, but we will at least know that. So we're asking for that, that piece of software that we can manage. Power School SAS. SAS stands for Software as a Service. It's just a really fancy IT way of saying, "Put it in the cloud." As you probably know earlier, we had Power School turned off for a couple of weeks because we had some concerns about our network, since the stuff was going on based on this Microsoft screw called the Printer Nightmare bug. But what that brought to the forefront, and some people we were talking to, was we have a really vulnerable piece of software and hardware that lives in our environment. Something of that significance probably should be moved out of this environment and put out in the cloud. Because companies like Power School have multiple backup servers, they have redundancy across the states, they have huge security departments, and we have me. So as much as I love me in my department, I think we should seriously consider moving that to the cloud, protecting it a little bit more, and make it more accessible to the town.
Also, in the event of another cybersecurity concern.
Concern, absolutely.
As we had at the start of the school year. And anything that's in the cloud, we can continue to use when our servers have been shut down. So that's the two-week period that Jerry was talking about, where we had to close things down while our cybersecurity experts were helping us to identify what had occurred. Thankfully, we were in a position where we did not lose data and no data was compromised for our district, but going through that process does take, you know, anywhere between eight and 10 days with your experts. And so during that time, our families, our teachers, our students did not have access to Power School. We go this route, putting the Power School system into the cloud, so that we can continue that service to our students' families and teachers.
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, and the point of this was, Power School was probably never at any risk, but as an IT director, I didn't know what was going on. What you do is you turn everything off. Until you identify what's going on, just to protect it, you take stuff offline. Had this been in the cloud, we would have just let it continue to run.
Will there be another use for that server?
We can certainly use that server. They're old. I mean, this server's probably, I bought it probably five or six years ago, so it's reconnected its life anyways. So at some point, not this year, but in the years, it will. So Genus, this is the number one request of my department for the last three years. Because when we went from no Chromebooks to 2,500 Chromebooks, we added no additional staff to support them. So we're now supporting 2,000 more computers that are in the hands of kids, and kids, you know, they do their best, and they edge things in them and write passwords on the screen and drop them, and we're always repairing these devices. Genus is this really cool curriculum that's actually being supported by the New Hampshire Department of Education that allows students to learn technical skills, helping the IT department to keep things running. It can be worked, it can be run as either a regular curriculum class or as a club. And I've had a couple of people who've stood in helping to have a club after school where we would help teach them, and they would learn how to fix Chromebooks and how to reset passwords and kind of get these essential technology skills that will help them for the rest of their lives, and will help the IT department not have to hire. Because a lot of these skills are just very manual labor, not really technical, but it just takes a person to do them. So really interesting to try, see if we can find a way to make that happen. Yeah, TeamViewer is in there, you guys have probably all used TeamViewer or something like it. Really what it is, is just remote access software that lets somebody outside of the building connect to our network, but TeamViewer does it in a very secure way, so they're not actually connecting to our network, they just see a picture of what's running on our network, and so they're remotely seeing our network. If you use things like VPNs and this little technical, they actually connect them to the network, so the person at home has a virus on their machine, we can get the virus on the network. TeamViewer connects us from that. We only have a few licenses for the very critical people like accounting and IT that use this. Questions on any of that?
I'm curious, I was thinking about the cloud-based Power School.
Power School, yeah.
Is the district, has the district or will the district also be moving in visions to the cloud? Because I feel like that, similarly, the student data, that's all your employee data.
Yes, absolutely. That is certainly a conversation that we've had.
Price tag attached to that. Drumroll, please.
It sure is.
It's really, really expensive. Power School is about, initial rollout is about $10,000, share with Claude, then $6,000 a year. Remember what infinite visions quote was? Was it $35,000 to start?
In addition to what we already.
On top of our current $12,000 a year, $15,000. So it's really, really expensive. Now, I understand the point.
Yeah, it's a good point.
It's really, really got a lot of value, right? So I think it's certainly something that you need to look at. Probably not this year, you know, I wouldn't say these words, but you throw something at me, there are other offerings out there that maybe we need to consider if Power School's going to power for, if the vision's going to fail. Yeah, okay, I did say.
Tell the teachers.
Pretend like that never was said.
You have to say infinite visions, not.
I think Jane is literally shooting daggers at you right now.
Yes.
Infinite visions, not.
Sorry.
I don't know what you're talking about, Jerry. Teach me another one? No. Jerry, you said Power School instead of infinite visions.
I know I did, I know I did. I didn't have the visions, but you figured that out as long as.
Yes, I know what you meant.
Yeah, good, thanks. I realize that was. Okay. Windows domain upgrade, this is going to get a little nerdy.
I missed it upfront.
Yeah, you gotta go up there. So Windows runs most of our network, except for the Chromebooks. So these printers run on Windows, all the desktops in here run on Windows, all the laptops, all the Macs, you know, the ATC classes run on Windows. Windows manages security, writes, printing, all of that stuff. So one of the very first things I did when I started 10 years ago is updated us to Windows 2012. And since that time, we haven't done anything to it, we've just been running it. And by Windows 2012, that's the domain, that's not the actual operating system, which you guys know is Windows 10, and it will be Windows 11 soon. So as typical Microsoft goes, they are no longer going to support it. So we have to fix this this year. It's kind of a major undertaking because it rips the underpinnings of the entire network out, puts these things called a major control event, it reorganizes printing, access to files and servers, and it's a big process. So we are going to need hardware, software, consulting. Because this isn't something that I do frequently, I've done it 10 years ago, and I want to get people that do this on a daily basis coming in and helping us. There are four domain controllers, servers are really expensive. So each server is about $8,000. We have one that absolutely possibly has, there's no doubt it has to be replaced. So that's in the budget. If there was some spare money at some point in this process, we are going to need to replace the other four domain controllers at some point. Either this year or slowly over the next year. Questions on that? Didn't go very well.
That wasn't too bad.
That wasn't too bad?
It wasn't.
Power School consulting. So as we discussed, Power School's kind of a key part of all of what we do here, and it actually is the source of information for a lot of the other applications we have. It feeds data to them, the nursing information, the library information. Our database administrator, dinner for several years, took another position in Hudson, I believe he is, is now the IT director there, left it open for a database administrator. One of my really qualified and smart employees offered to take the role, and has, has done a phenomenally good job, but doesn't have any formal training. So what we're doing right now is backfilling her with consultants. We have a really, we've got a really good consultant that has been brought to the crew, has done an amazing job of helping us. What I would like to do is continue to use this consultant for a year, fairly expensive, and at the same time, get my employee Janet off to Power School University so we can move away from that. So that's my plan with this also this next year. And I think that's really all the real major expenditures I have. So not a lot of asks this year. Any questions, thoughts? Yes.
Could we send Janet to Power School University sooner so we don't have to continue to pay for the expensive consultant or?
It happens when it happens. So I can look and see if there's a convenient time, but I also don't want her gone for a few weeks while we're processing, so we're going to do it over the summer if all possible.
I think that's typically when it runs. There's two ends to Power School University, there's the educator side, and then there's the technology folks side. When I attended Power School University years ago, it was during the summer period. And so if it's something that is offered again during the summer, I absolutely think that we can and should try to have Janet attend sooner than later.
Any other thoughts or questions, guys?
Excellent, not above and below your budget, thank you.
Thank you.
And that's but not.
Oh, you guys couldn't do that.
We'll put you at the beginning next year.
Judy, I'm asking next year if I could go first, okay?
Well, we'll flip it next year. That's the other year, right?
We'll take turns.
Are we concerning heat today? Sorry, say it again. I said, "Are we concerning heat today?" I think he's adjusted that. Could you speak to me?
Heat's on.
It's starting to warm up a little bit.
Because this unit here is AC only, and they left it on.
Ah, that's why.
I had to go and turn it off, yeah. So the other unit's out running, and we'll have that.
Off savings.
Yeah. Stamp your feet, keep your warm. And if everybody went faster, we wouldn't be here as long.
Note to self, they show us.
I'm taking my time now. You guys made me wade through this whole thing. So, building grounds, we completed the replacement of the boilers at Heron Pond at the middle school. They did a really good job there. We painted two wings of classrooms at Heron Pond. They haven't, we haven't touched any of the paint in those classrooms in 21 years now. So my goal is to continue in phases, wing by wing, and do that. Placed two sets of exterior doors at the middle school with actually fiberglass doors, so I'm not worried about rusting anymore. The other projects in process right now, we have six rooftop units here at the high school that are earmarked to be replaced. One of them failed, the heat exchange are crap, and that was for Jim Angel's classroom. We were in the middle of meeting, and they condemned the unit. So we have little space units in there right now. The unit's on order, it's going to take four to six weeks to get it in. We're trying to get it in quicker so that we can get that up and running. I still, the exhaust fans are actually for Heron Pond, as part of a feasibility study. There were four exhaust fans in there, I believe. It's like $4,500, so we're trying to get that done and get some of those smaller picketed items on the feasibility study off the books. Current staff, and we're not the only ones having problems. I've been talking to other facility directors around the state, and everyone's having a problem. They're paying, their staff is one of the, somebody had asked me, is that our current hourly rate, people are getting paid $17 to $19 an hour, and they can't get any money. So we, our temporary solution was to outsource jocks and bales. I have four part-time people that come in, six to 10, and they're even having problems getting people to work for them. It's just the way that it's working right now, so. We are working on a study with the Special Advisory Facilities Committee, is that the name? So we're working on that, we're working on different things. It's actually, I think, a very diverse group and a lot of experience, a lot of knowledge in there, so I think we'll make headway on that. So our increases, we want to continue painting that jocks and bales. They started that last, it was last year that Kyle and, so we want to finish that up because they were in between cleaning and taking care of all the things, so we want to do that. Heron Pond, we want to continue with the repainting, the carpet and the furniture. So the building's 20, 21 years, and the office furniture has been replaced, the carpets haven't been replaced there or in the library, so I'd like to update those areas. Building's actually in really good shape. I don't think we've done any carpet over there at all in that building, so. Millwork at the middle school. Back in 1718, we had a $3 million bond, we did the south side classrooms. Millwork is the cafeteria, and we did a phenomenal job on those. Our classrooms and, I'm going to say Home Economics, but that's what it's called.
Consumer Affairs?
Huh? Consumer Ed. So they want their, all their stuff upgraded too, all the millwork in there. And it's rather expensive, so this should be a multi-year project to get all of the classrooms done. District-wide, so what we have done, or what we are doing, is been looking at all the entries to the high school, and as we've been cleaning them up, we did it over at Heron Pond last year. Took all the old dead shrubs out, and we made nice flower beds, and they've been planting perennials in there and some annuals, so I want to continue with that. Student services right here, two planos on either side, I'd like to rip up everything out of there. Over at the middle school, where Consumer Ed is, we've got areas there, we want to start dressing up herb appeal, aesthetics, so when people come in, they say, you know, "We're taking care of everything." That's where the 5,000 is. The water sewer has increased. This year, we had a ton of rain, so our fields look great. From what I understand, and I'm still waiting for them to get back to me, is water sewer lines are going to be overhauled. They're going to start that, and that's a big project. And the rate pairs are going to, there's going to be an increase, not sure when, but usually, because their fiscal year starts in January, ours starts in July, we usually get hit halfway through the years. And so I've been trying to stay on top of that by calling them, saying, "Do you have anything coming around?" Haven't heard from them yet, so we're anticipating that we're going to get hit with that too. Restroom cleaning equipment, $7,500 a unit. So the restroom equipment that we had was $1,100 a pop. It was, you know, starter style, and the ones that we want are, I wouldn't say they're top of the line, but they're pretty close. All the universities, colleges use them, and I'm not, I don't want to buy one for each custodian, we want to buy two for each building so that, you know, they can use them. And the problem we were having with the equipment that we have now, the Echo Lab equipment, is that when they were done, they were supposed to run water. is that when they were done, they were supposed to run the water for them and they weren't doing that. And we didn't know until like the third time they came in and they said, oh, this is what you have to do. So, the pumps are going, the batteries weren't holding the charge. You know, they, ECO Labs wants us to use their chemicals and we're not, that's not the line we use them. So, there was a few problems with that.
Is this equipment for the floors?
Oh, restrooms.
What do you?
So, we go in, work smarter, not harder. They can spray down the entire restroom. And let it soak and then come back.
And then it's done.
Right, so, these are already included in the budget. Boilers, I would like to talk to the entire board about jocks. It was brought up, someone said jocks and bales. I'm gonna, when I talked with Kristy about this, you know, and Jane, I had a conversation with Jane, it makes no sense to even consider doing boilers at bales right now until we figure out what we're gonna do. Jocks, I would say that, you know, it's, we're using it, it's the next one on the list and we will be two years ahead of our proposed project. I'd like to do that. So, for the last, the high school and the middle school in Heron Pond, we spent around $220,000 for boilers, give or take a few dollars. But, that's where I came up with the 225 of that. Paving at the high school, middle school. Paving has always been put on and taken off. Nothing made it out of the superintendent's office. I'm not blaming Kristy, but every other one has said, nope, we'll take it right off, too expensive. Take a look at the parking lots now. These are probably the worst around and we have to plow them. So, my proposal would be to start on the access road and start there, do that section, so from the middle school all the way over to the, where the fire hydrant is here at the high school. And then do the walkway that goes over there, the nonexistent walkway now, right? Because it's all problem. But that's a start. And then, next year, take another. I'm not looking for a lot of money, but if we can do $50,000 a year until this gets done, I think we're way ahead of the, ahead of the game. That's what I'm looking for. Window replacements of jocks. If you look at the west end of the building, there are wooden windows still. Why they didn't replace them, I don't know, but they're all rotten now. So, I need to get some, those windows replaced. And because we're not doing a entire building, the numbers go skyrocketing. To do two windows, we've asked three different companies, it was $6,000. Because they, you have to remember, they're five foot wide and I think they're five foot tall, four foot tall, but they're considered an egress as well. So, because it's a first floor, if there's a fire, they can open the windows and go through. So, the size of the window. Electrical usage, we do have increases, decreases. Most of me are not a big, big ticket item right there. We are using the buildings more now and even last year. Starting to get the team back in practicing on a, on a daily basis. This, EverSource is increasing their system benefit charges. And as you can see, it'll add $5,100, $22 and $8,100, $23. Even though we contracted our supply rate at a really good rate through '24, that's supply coming in. EverSource, we don't have that contract with them, so their numbers move up and down. Utilities for the natural gas, jocks, bales, that's a minor increase, same with Heron Pond, middle school, high school, bigger building, a little bit more inefficient, gets a lot more use. So, the numbers have gone up. We're gonna try to tighten it up a little bit. We're not, we're not staying open on Saturdays except for when we have to do the budgets. If we, yeah, you know, that's what happens.
Well, Bill, they just got reported this on TV when they said natural gas is going up 80%.
Yep.
That was, they said that's, that's what's going up.
Everything's going up.
But 80%, like, what? 80% for natural gas.
You can flip back for a second.
I know.
You're fine. There you go. Alright, so, but the high school line actually reflects what we use last year. Jane and I looked at it and I even wanted to make sure that the numbers were correct. And we, we were a little low when we put our budget numbers together for that, so this could actually bring us more in line with where we're supposed to be. So, I don't come, I don't know if to go back to the school board saying I need some more money, so. But, utilities are going up and someone had asked me, are the savings from the LED lights that we paying for the work that was done? Yes, that's what we're doing, Dr. Jane, with that. We do have a separate line in there now, just so everyone knows what the number is. But that's, we even went back to Centrica and said, hey, can you double check the numbers? Because I'm seeing a little discrepancy and they're working on it too with us, so. But that's where the savings, their savings coming through the savings from what we have, so. You good?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
What questions might you have for, before we hit this here? What other questions might you have for Mr. Cooper?
I'm just wondering, I feel like over the last several years, it's your budget that gets cut more than most. You're not really asking for a lot, so I'm just wondering, are you comfortable that we're sort of on a trajectory to get back where we should be if we hadn't continued to defer so many of these things?
That wasn't an honest answer.
No, I would like, no, I mean, you know, I had the...
Just kind of get back to some of the increases that were set.
No, I wanted, you know, we had the...
Well, last year we cut your 75, but then we gave it back.
Yeah, right. But, so, you know, we have the feasibility study that was done and there's a lot in there. Paving was part of that. We did have that, $50,000 in the budget. There's other things, you know, that's not even on there. We're looking for utility vehicle for the grounds staff because they are using the golf court, golf cart that the AD gave us. And they use that every time they go out to paint the fields and take care of the fields, they pick up trash with it. So, if we were to look at a new utility vehicle, it would have a plow on it too so that we could use it day around. So, there's always something that we need, you know, we want to do, but I understand how everything works, you know. But would I like more money? Yeah, I'd love to have more money. Jane doesn't want to give it to me.
We're trying to balance out, right, the asks, right? So, I think what we've been able to do with Bill's budget, speaking about current projects, we've been able to really utilize the SRT2, right? We did a lot of projects through SRT2. We've got a couple of projects coming up here that we'll also incorporate into SRT2. We're trying to balance, right, the asks within the operating budget by looking at some alternative sources for, you know, the needs that have been identified. You're right, deferred maintenance last costs have been a big issue in our district. So, we're trying to inch away bit by bit in addressing those needs through various mechanisms, such as the federal funds, including, and then also the operating budget. And then as we've, you know, sort of noted here, is really the idea of possibly looking to the maintenance expendable trust or potentially earmarking some funds with our fund balance this, this spring at the end of the school year. So, this is where we're sort of hoping that you folks will be able to sort of, you know, have some discussions with us about the real needs of, of the district in areas of B&amp;G, technology, furniture, and, and help provide some direction in terms of what you feel might be best for our community as well as, you know, taxpayers, as well as for supporting the needs of the district. In the next couple of slides here, what I was hoping that we might be able to do is, and again, it may be, may be here now, or maybe in, in your individual committees as a board and, and a budget advisory, we're hoping that you might be able to help to inform our next steps through this budget process. Talking about such, such topics as the planning for the preschool needs. I think that was a significant discussion we had earlier today and one that we need to continue for sure. In terms of looking at our planning for furniture replacement, if you can just update that slide, I did do a total, Marion, for you. And I'm not sure why it's not coming up.
It was 99.
Yep, $99,048 was the total.
Did that include the furniture that Bill was looking forward to?
Let me just see if I can't refresh it. I did add a few pieces there. Yeah, you know, it's one that has to be updated. Refreshed.
That's the cafeteria and classroom furniture?
That's all the schools?
All the furniture.
Yeah.
Carrie, to answer your question, yeah, I'm comfortable where we're going, but, so, this year, you know, we have, you know, the budget's the budget and try to help out everyone. But when we get those unexpected items like that unit that failed, you know, that's $15,000 that has to be, and we have to replace it. I can't wait.
Here now.
Right now.
So, one of the unfortunate things about putting money into items that we plan to eventually replace, obviously you can't recuperate it. So, spending money on furniture, we can take the furniture to a new building with us. And again, I know Vasso said that furniture is not typically covered under any of the SRT, any of the SRT funding, but do we know for sure? Like, if the furniture is actually allowing us to safely social distance and, I mean...
I would leave that to the experts.
Yeah, so if, if that was the intent, right, if that was the intent of the furniture purchase was to set up structures that allowed for greater social distancing, you probably could make a stretch or you could stretch to put something like that in for approval. However, it is a stretch. I think, I think you said, what, the coating on top of the tables is antibacterial?
Sure is.
And, and again, those are probably stretches for the SRT funding. And it's also not really our intention, right? Our, it's, it's our intention to replace furniture because it's unsafe or it's because it hasn't...
Yeah, I mean, I understand that, but I also, just back to the question of building so much funding in that then suddenly we're gonna have to continue to pay for. So, I'm just trying to look at a balanced way to take advantage of, you know, I mean, anything that we can take advantage of to, to...
Unfortunately, furniture is probably not going to be that item.
You also have to think this also as a pool of money, right? If you take $40,000 out for furniture, then you have $40,000 less for health science.
Right, I'm talking about the 2.3 million, that's a lot of money.
You'll see, it's not that much money.
No, we're planning on using all of our SRT funds, right?
Yes, absolutely.
As long as we use them, but if we can use some of it for investments.
Right, so we'll be sharing an update as an agenda item on Monday to show you how much of that 2.3 has already been allocated in earmarked. So, I just want to explain the furniture piece here. So, what you see here are the items that were not budgeted, that we're hoping perhaps an alternative source might help to support. That's those items here. As Jan spoke about in the high school budget presentation, she cut her ask for furniture in half, so $12,000 is not included, $12,000 was included in the operating budget and Heron Pond common areas remained, remained in the budget at $10,000. So, looking at about a total of about $99,000 for furniture replacement. Another topic here for discussion would certainly be the planning for the paving and boiler projects. Again, those are not budgeted, but potentially seek another source.
I just got a question, Bill, dealing with paving. Your funds, what you were looking for was just for one section, right?
Correct.
Could we look at a warrant article for the whole project?
No, we're, we're looking, it's very substantial. So, when I, well, when we looked at it, you know, when I had LDA look at it, they came up with a number. When I talked to a paver, they came up with a totally different number. So, it's a, it's a, you're talking two schools. This parking lot here, you know, the square footage, we had somebody just for seal coat in here in the high school. We were, we were in the $20,000 to $30,000 range, which is, you know, astronomical just to spray it to try to keep it together. I think we were, LDA had, I think, $350,000, $350,000. Someone told me we're closer to $750,000 for both schools. That's a big, big ticket item. When I first started in '03, we were doing the roofs here at the high school and every spring it was, you had $50,000, get as much done as possible and then we'll wait for next year. And that's how we did it. And I think we did it in seven or eight sections. I think you remember that, do you?
Oh, I do.
So, I think that's the way you would do the parking lot too. If I can get the north side done and then, you know, move over and do one more, but I want to start in the access road. I don't think it's a big ask for...
When you do the paving, do you have to do, like, a couple of years ago, we did paving the high school at Connaughton. And it was so bad that we had to just rip it all up and redistribute what was underneath. Is that the case here or is it...
I think in some spots, yes.
So, that's big money.
Yeah, we're gonna have to look at it. I think it has to be regraded, certain areas. But on the north side, you know, Jane came up with a great idea. We cut into the grass a little bit and had head-end diagonal parking so you could get more people in there and they'd be forced to go one way so you're not getting traffic going out. And then, but that's why I would like to do one section at a time instead of doing the whole thing. Because it's, on a personal note, I've already scheduled my driveway to be paved at home. And I am number 12 in, in the springtime when they can get to me. And they, when I talked to them in July and they said, we have 40 people that we're doing in October alone.
Wow.
So, that, you know, that's what happens with the paving. So, we're gonna have to be a year ahead of them to get it all in there. So, I think if we, if we take off a chunk at a time, we'd be okay.
But to Joe's point, did we, I can't remember, is all the pavement included in the feasibility study?
Just these two buildings.
Okay.
Not everywhere.
Okay, so it wouldn't make sense to try to do a separate warrant article if we're gonna be asking...
If they say no on the warrant article, we can't do anything with the paving. Am I correct on that?
Yeah, so we shouldn't go down that road.
So, I just want everyone to be aware of that.
If we did a warrant article for the furniture, that would reduce the budget by about $100,000.
But if they say no to it, we can't replace it?
Right, but is it, but is it critical to have it replaced this year? That's the question, because that's gonna determine whether or not you want a warrant article.
Hey, I don't, I can't speak for...
Go ahead, guys.
Well, I think some, some of the furniture at, you know, at jocks, we could, we could hold it. I'm listening to, you know, the other buildings here, I don't know if that's the case.
I'd say for the middle school, you know, we could definitely wait on the desks and chairs, but I think those cafeteria tables are...
They have to go.
They're a little bit more pressured just because of the potential safety concerns for some of the units.
So, maybe we could do a warrant, warrant article for part of it than the stuff that's not so critical? Because you can't do it if they say no.
Right.
$45,000, $100,000 is nothing.
That's true.
Yeah.
It's not a lot of money.
The case I made for my building is just, it's budgeted. Trying to fix it now, seeing the issue, where if it fails during the school year, you're not gonna have...
Can I just ask a general question, please? About what is the feeling of this group, the total budget? I mean, is it, are we looking to reduce something or are we comfortable with the numbers or what?
So, let's just go back to the proposed...
Say it again?
We have two negotiating contracts for units, which is gonna make the budget go up.
Yes. Right, and so, I, I think for the budget advisory committee and the board to inform us in terms of, you know, what you're comfortable putting forward to the voters. And certainly that doesn't have to be determined today, but in terms of informing our next steps, it would be helpful to have that information as we continue to work as an administrative team.
Even if we passed everything, it still wouldn't address the preschool issues.
Well, it would be us teachers, just not space.
Yeah, but as I said, it's still not addressing... Yeah, but, I'm saying, it's still not addressing the issues.
So if we, we're gonna still reach out to those, that might be, that might be a solution.
Yep, that's on our list, we'll reach out to them next week and begin some conversations about the realities of that.
So typically, what is the amount of money for the C B U's on an annual basis?
Estimate.
Yeah, so, um, Jane, would you be able to speak to, on, on average, um, and it's probably different, right? Depending on, on the various groups. But it's just, uh, it's just the first year of a three-year contract or four-year contract that would affect this number here.
And there are small groups that were, one is, um, the custodians and maintenance, which is about twenty-two, twenty-three people. And the other group is the administrators, um, non-S A U, and I wanna say that's about seventeen?
So between the total, is that, just to have fun, be about two million between the two of them?
No.
No, I mean about, yeah. Mentally.
Are you committing to that show?
Joe, they're gonna want you on their, you know, now.
You're paying them two million, I'm ready. But what is, the amount, what would be the total of the two, what is my, right, uh, proctimus?
Year one.
I have no idea where you guys are gonna land on it.
Yeah, it's too early to tell, I think.
Yeah, yeah. A certainly lower than what your warrant article's total.
It certainly wouldn't be appropriate, right, for us to, yes, at this point, because we're still in negotiations.
This past year, what would be the total amount that we're paying those two groups?
Well, you're not gonna be doing your total amount, you're gonna be doing your increase.
I know, oh, I understand.
I actually, I honestly don't know.
Cause all we're gonna do is increase this by the percentage of what it was last year.
Wow. So I think that's probably something that we can research and get back to the two groups.
The budget that we have in there still has the maintenance, has this, uh, administration in there, it just doesn't have their increase.
Their increase, exactly.
So the increase isn't gonna be significant, but it's gonna be soft.
I think it's gonna end up less than ten cents on your, your thousand, on your dollar for both. Yeah, right now, like, if you were to do just over a hundred thousand warrant article for your furniture alone, you'd have a, um, five cent tax impact per thousand, so. Remember, you got a very large tax base right now, that's spread out over, two billion is quite, is big. It's a lot bigger than last year. Can I just say that having, this having been the first time I've been through this with this group, that you all did a really good job?
Thank you so much.
A lot of hard work.
I hand it to our principals and directors and their teams up back at the school at department level. They've put a lot of time, effort, uh, and energy, uh, into this process thus far, and we know that we're only about midway through. So thank you for that acknowledgement.
Thank you. Can we look at, Jane, you gave us that final figure, I think it was a, a, a bit off, it was forty-five million, ninety-nine, one eighty-seven.
Ooh, that's, oh, there it is, okay. Yeah, that's the adjusted.
The answer to my question is on the screen, sorry. Never mind.
Yeah, it was just...
I find this number very helpful, because it shows you that a hundred thousand more is less than point-three percent on the budget at this point, so makes the math easy.
Yes, and, um, just so that I didn't speak to it, but, um, a handout that I did give you today does do, um, an estimate of your revenues estimated for the year, your tax rate information that we did put up there. And there was, um, a piece of the tax estimate worksheet that I say is kinda worthless. But at the same time, at the bottom, it wasn't on the, the, um, slide, but at the bottom here, it does run through what, what the, uh, tax base is and what the effect is on a house of two-hundred thousand.
Are we considering that ally help when you have those classes? Will we have some?
Yes.
Some coming from that?
Absolutely.
Uh, the year before, when we had eighteen students, we brought in sixty-five thousand dollars. And, um, I'm in the commission for tuition and transportation for C T E right now, and those numbers will go up, I can tell you that.
So we can estimate around sixty-five thousand at least coming, maybe coming...
Well, we hope, but, um, also with, uh, health science, we are required by law because of the Perkins to, um, we are allowed, required by law to have students from other districts take spots. So even if we have full demand, we still have to let them in. And Nashwa jokes that, uh, our students had better be fast signing up, or they are gonna fill it up before we have a chance for our students to sign up, so. I expect a revenue from them.
Okay.
Health science is definitely a, a, a popular area right now, right?
Well, the nursing, we just saw nursing, this, they said they, but they thought they were gonna be wary of getting them, and they, actually, just the opposite. They filled their programs instant.
Yep.
Well, we certainly thank you, uh, for your time and attention today. Uh, we look forward to continuing to work with you, uh, in your upcoming meetings. Please don't hesitate to put your questions through the Google Doc. Uh, we'll be prepared to answer those ongoingly, um, and certainly be prepared for any continued conversations, uh, at the board level uh, or with the budget advisory committee. Um, your ongoing support is very much appreciated. Uh, please don't hesitate to help provide us with some guidance as we continue to work through the budget season. Thanks very much for today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Judy. Judy, do you have a closing statement?
I do.
Yeah, you gotta close.
Yes, um, I, we don't have to vote, but I'm gonna adjourn the meeting at twelve thirty. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Judy.